As it's nine thirty, we will move to get started. Okay, so, we, uh, good morning to all those who have got a lot of extra people coming into the public gallery today, so we'll say good morning to them also. Good morning councillors and officers. We'll declare the meeting open at nine thirty one. And I'll acknowledge the Kwanzaa Mooka people who are the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet today. As a matter of housekeeping, we need to remind everyone that should there be an emergency or an evacuation, the meeting, um, you just follow the directions of the offices and that the meeting is being recorded in audio and video as well as live streamed online. Councillors are reminded that parliamentary privilege does not extend to this chamber as it does for state and federal parliamentarians, and you're reminded to be cognizant of this in any comments which you may make during the course of the meeting. I'd like to remind all councillors to use your microphone when speaking, and remember to turn it off when not speaking. And for any councillors or officers who might be listening in virtually, to use your mute button when, uh, not speaking. As I say, in the event of an evacuation, remain calm, follow the directions of the staff, emergency exits are through the gallery doors on my right, your left for the people in the gallery, down the stairwell and directly out onto Bloomfield Street. I will take a moment to remind all members of the public that are present today that as guests in the chamber, um, you must not without prior approval of the chairperson make any audio or video recordings or take any photographs within the chamber, remain quiet and not disrupt the meeting in any way, do not bring into the meeting any signs, placards or items which may cause a hazard or interfere with any person present, be suitably addressed, which I'm sure you all are, and turn all mobile devices to silent mode or leave the meeting to take any phone calls. As Chair, it is my responsibility to warn a member of the public present at a meeting who is not complying with any of these requirements and may, without such warning, require a person to leave the meeting and not return for a period, uh, should there be an issue. Councillors, we have some leaves of absence that we need to deal with today. I have been advised of two. Can I please have a mover and a seconder to approve Mayor Joss Mitchell being granted leave of absence for today's general meeting as she is in Canberra representing council at a council of mayors delegation? Moved councillor Mitchell, seconded councillor Bishop, all those in favour? I'm assuming that is... Thank you. That is unanimous with the absence of councillor Hewlett, who is our next, um, leave of absence. So councillors, if I can have a mover and a seconder, that councillor Lance Hewlett be granted leave of absence for today's meeting. Moved councillor Boglari, seconded councillor Coley, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. Councillors, I'll just remind you now to sign the attendance sheet and try to remember to do so myself as well. Now, uh, we have with us today Reverend Joel Poppenbeck of the Living Church to lead council in a brief devotional segment. Uh, there he is. Good morning, thank you, and we'll leave it over to you, Joel. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you so much for this opportunity. It's a privilege just to be able to share for a few moments and hopefully encourage us all, whether we're sitting at the back or around the table. So, um, my name is Joel. I work for SU Australia as well, managing school chaplains across the south side of Brisbane, including eleven state schools and one independent school in the Redlands. And a few years ago, I worked as a school chaplain, and one of the lasting images I have in my mind is when I, it was end of year, we had Christmas hampers that were donated by local churches, and I got to go and deliver one to a family. It just so happened as I arrived at the house, this young boy who I'd been working with, a pretty troubled young lad, he came around on the corner on his bike, right as I arrived, we literally got there at the same time, and he looked up with shock at my face to be like, 'Chappie, what are you doing here? Am I in trouble? What's going on?' And then he saw me grab this big hamper of Christmas goodies, hundred dollars worth of food and vouchers and different things, and his face just lit up. And it was the absolute joy of the role, all the sort of, you know, little things throughout the week of, you know, writing notes and reporting different things and running breakfast club, handing out toasts, playing Uno, all the little things that sometimes can be challenging, sometimes can be tedious, all seemed to be worthwhile in that little moment. And so I just want to encourage all of us, in whatever we do, that in the good work we're doing, to keep going. There's a lot of things on the agenda, calendars get full, I know that life is difficult and there are lots of different ways to view all the issues in our world, and it can be challenging to navigate. But for us to press forward in doing good work, whatever that would look like. Jesus in the Bible, he says, 'It's more blessed to give than to receive.' That actually serving is a good thing, giving is a good thing, and when we can do that, actually part of the joy is when we get to see the face of people that we serve, see them light up and know, hey, actually I did a good thing and had a positive impact, and that is a blessing. It's a good thing to be a part of. So I want to encourage you in the busyness of all that we do, just to slow down a moment, see the face of the person that you're serving, and hopefully you would know that you're making a positive impact. So that's my first encouragement, just to keep going, do what you're doing, have a positive impact in the lives of people and see the joy on people's faces. The second encouragement, and I know there's probably many different people in the room where we're at different points of our life and not sure where you're at with faith or religion or anything like that, but Jesus says, 'To all who did receive Him.' For those people who received that gift of what He offers, He gives the right to become children of God. And so, whatever that looks like with you, I believe with my whole heart that life is worth living and there is good in the world worth fighting for, as Sam says to Frodo in The Lord of the Rings. There's plenty of good that's worth going for. That's, to actually receive that gift, to receive the good, whatever that looks like, to receive the gift of God, whatever that looks like for you, is far better than a hamper of Christmas goodies, it's far better than a lasting legacy or satisfaction in your job, that actually there is good and that God offers to His children wonderful joy, peace, love and hope. And so whatever it looks like for you to receive that gift, whether that's just to accept the help that's around, whether that's simply to explore, um, life at a deeper level or faith at a deeper level, I'd encourage you to take that time to receive that. So I want to thank you for your time this morning, thank you for this space, for ministers around the Redlands to be able to encourage you, keep going what you're doing. And I want to leave you with a blessing. This is a blessing that, uh, my family, we used to sing at all of our family gatherings. I'm not going to sing it this morning, as tempting as that might be, but I just want to share it with you. It says this, 'The Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make His face shine upon you and be gracious to you. And the Lord turn His face towards you and give you peace.' Amen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joel. Thank you, councillors. I'm not aware of any matters of condolence today, no. So, moving on to recognition of achievement, I believe we have a recognition of achievement from councillor Mitchell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, my recognition today, I have two, two individuals, both Olympians who have, from Division Two, who have been over in Paris, one in Tahiti indeed. So, Ethan Ewing, Ethan Ewing, sorry, from North Strabag Island, he was an Olympic, or is an Olympic surfer and always will be now, an Olympic surfer. Australia's own Ethan Ewing was one of four surfers from Australia to take part in the Paris Olympics. Surfing made its debut in Tokyo in 2020, where it was Australia's Owen Wright won a bronze medal in the men's event, so that was our first Olympic surfing medal. Ethan's no stranger to this chamber, we've recognised him previously on the world stage. Ethan rose to fame, winning the World Surfing League Junior World Championship in 2016, and has established himself as one of Australia's foremost surfers. Helen Ewing, Ethan's mother, is regarded as a pioneer woman surfing in Australia. She won the Bells Beach Pro. Anyone that knows surfing knows Bells Beach, or has watched the movie Point Break, should know that. And forty years later, Ethan then surfed to glory at the same event. So, what a lovely family moment. Fellow straddy surfing icon and previous world number two, B. Derbage, has also coached Ethan and was involved on the Olympic team. Ethan qualified for Paris, twenty twenty-four Olympics, having finished in the top five in the World Surfing League end of season rankings. In the men's event in Paris, Ethan, currently ranked fifth in the world, I believe, went up against twenty-three of the top surfers from around the world. Olympic surfing events actually took place in Taupo Reef in Tahiti, in French Polynesia. Um, the fact Ethan was competing there at all is remarkable. He broke his back there in twenty twenty-three, and then rehabbed, came back and then competed there at the Olympics, so pretty impressive. Ethan won through his first three preliminary rounds in Paris with some stellar performances. He then met fellow Aussie Akanji surfing teammate, Jack Robinson, from Margaret River, WA, in the quarterfinals, and unfortunately Ethan was bested by his fellow Aussie. It was sparkling conditions on that day and it was a mighty show. It was the highest scoring contest of the day, so the Aussies did us proud. Ethan actually had the best ride of the day with an eight point three three, which is a massive score and the longest barrel of the day, and if any of you watched it, absolutely terrifying and exhilarating at the same time. Um, Aussie Jack went on to win the Olympic silver medal, so I reckon Ethan and Redlands can claim a little piece of that silver as well. So Ethan Ewing, Olympic surfing quarter-finalist and so much more, we're very proud of your many and your growing achievements. The next fellow, Cassiel Rousseau. Aussie Cassiel, an Olympic diver in Paris. Cassiel's now twenty-four, he's an alumnus of Cleveland District State High School. Had the pleasure of meeting him and seeing him address some students with some inspirational stories. Yeah, councillor Yussi, you were there as well, at the sports awards, I think it was two years ago. Very impressive young man. He stunned the world at twenty twenty-three World Championships in Fukuoka, Japan. He won the gold medal, denying China a clean sweep, um, just seven years after he started diving as a sixteen-year-old, so a magnificent overachiever. Um, like Ethan who overcame adversity, Cassiel has a fear of heights. Who would have thunk, now diving off the ten-metre platform into the water. Before making the transition to diving, his teenage life revolved around acrobatic gymnastics, so he came from a pretty classy background. He won the, uh, athlete award for distinction for his performance at the twenty sixteen Acrobatic World Championships in China, and he was the flag bearer for Australia at that, at that meet. Olympic blood runs in Cassiel's family, and it's the stories that make this so remarkable, both with Ethan and with Cassiel. His grandfather, Frenchman Michael Rousseau, was an Olympic elite cyclist. He won gold at the Montreal, oh, sorry, at the Melbourne Olympic Games in nineteen fifty-six. So on his Olympic debut in Tokyo, a twenty-year-old Cassiel advanced to the final of the men's ten-metre platform, and he finished a commendable eighth. This is Australia's third best result ever in that event, so he's one of the trailblazers. Um, in Paris as an Australian representative, he performed beautifully, finishing fourth in the men's ten-metre platform final, sixth in the men's ten-metre synchro, this after winning through all the qualifying heats. So even just to make the finals is remarkable. Cassiel says, 'Everything is a result of the high degree of effort and consistency that I put into relation to my training.' So what we see up there is just the few seconds at the end of years and years of excellence and persistence. So Cassiel Rousseau, Olympic diver, we're proud of you as well, and the example you set for bringing your dreams to reality.
Thank you very much councillor Mitchell for those two recognitions of achievement, and I believe councillor Coley has the recognition of achievement also.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor. Like councillor Mitchell, I would like to acknowledge the outstanding achievements of several Redland locals who are competing, sorry, competed at the Olympic Games and a couple who are competing at the upcoming Paralympics. I'll start with Isaac Kennedy. BMX rider Isaac Kennedy started out at Redlands BMX Club in Kapalaba and made his Olympic debut in Paris, coming through six tough qualifying races to reach the final. Making it to the start line at all was an achievement in itself for the racer who originates from Thornlands. Kennedy suffered a potentially career-ending injury in July last year, fracturing his ankle and rupturing his ACL, MCL and PCL in his left knee after a heavy crash in the USA. Demonstrating extraordinary resilience and commitment to his Olympic dream, the twenty-four-year-old returned to action just seven months later, racing to victory in round three of the twenty twenty-four World Cup series, just down the road from here at the twenty thirty-two Games venue in Chandler. Everything seemed to be going to plan when he was crowned BMX Racing World Cup champion in April this year, but just one day before the start of the BMX World Championships, he broke two bones in his wrist, including his scaphoid, which exploded into ten pieces. Despite initially thinking his Paris dream was over, Kennedy was determined to line up in France, and that he did. He raced with a broken hand throughout the competition and still made his way through those six qualifying races to the final. Isaac did our nation and our city proud, and I can't wait to see him continue to inspire our future Olympians. I'd also like to acknowledge Paris swimmer Jake Michelle. Uh, while, while the Olympics have drawn to a close, the Paralympics in Paris are just getting started. A week from now, they, they kick off in the French capital, and Jake has been selected for his second Paralympic campaign. He'll be competing in the men's one hundred metre breaststroke SB fourteen category early next month, looking to better the silver medal he collected at the Tokyo Games three years ago. During that event, the Berkdale resident set a new Australian record in finishing second and has since gone on to win more medals at subsequent World Championships. His heat swim will be on the evening of Monday, September second, and I'm sure that we'll see him progress again to the final, which takes place in the early hours of Tuesday, September third. Jake has an outstanding chance to win an Olympic gold medal that he has worked so hard for, and I think it's safe for me to say to Jake that you have the support of our community and we're so proud to have you representing us on the world stage. Lastly, I'd like to acknowledge another Paris swimmer, Paige Leonhardt, who will be competing at the Paralympics next month. Remarkably, Paris will be the twenty-three-year-old's third Paralympic campaign. She was a finalist in the hundred metre butterfly and hundred metre breaststroke as a fifteen-year-old in Rio, before competing in the delayed Tokyo Games three years ago. It was there that she collected her first Olympic medal, securing silver in the women's one hundred metre butterfly S fourteen category, while also placing sixth in the one hundred metre breaststroke. She has a busy schedule in the French capital as she aims to bring home as many as three medals. She starts with the heats of the one hundred metre butterfly on Thursday, August twenty-nine, an event which she won gold at the twenty twenty-two World Paris Swimming Championships. The Thornlands local will be back in the pool for the one hundred metre breaststroke on September two, before rounding out her campaign with the two hundred metre individually medley on September four. Again, we say to Paige that this whole city is behind you, and we can't wait to see what you do in the next fortnight and beyond.
Thank you very much councillor Coley, and I believe councillor Bishop wants to add a few comments.
Yes, thank you very much. Good morning. I have two Olympic acknowledgements regarding Berkdale resident athlete Reese Holder and boxer Shannon Davy. Firstly, I want to comment on the pride felt by many locals while watching the Paris Olympics and seeing the incredible achievements of former Berkdale State School and Wellington Point State High School student Reese Holder on his Olympic debut. Reese competed in the men's four hundred metre at the Stade de France. His journey in athletics began at a young age participating in Berkdale State, then Wellington Point School Athletics carnivals, before joining Redlands Little Athletics, and I remember his inspirational sports teacher at Berkdale, Mr Menzies, referring to him as Reese Lightning. He was prophetic in that nomenclature. Despite showing immense talent as a youngster, Reese had a meteoric rise in twenty twenty-three at the World University Games, but this success was a long time in the making, going right back to his humble beginnings in our city. In the four hundred metre at those World Games in Chengdu, China last August, Reese clocked a Paris Olympic qualifier of forty-four point seven nine to become the fifth fastest in Australian history. It was also the fastest time by an Aussie for seventeen years. At age twenty-two, his progress was interrupted by an injury which saw him unable to compete in the twenty twenty-four domestic season, but Reese resumed where he left off in Europe over the past couple of months, culminating with his performance at the Olympics. To the delight of many locals, including my sons, who remember him zipping ahead of them at their sports meets, they all celebrated the news of their former schoolmate, when Holder became the second fastest Australian of all time when he recorded a sizzling forty-four point five three seconds over four hundred metres in his heat to earn automatic qualification for the semi-finals. Reese still calls the Redlands home, and his journey from Berkdale School Oval to a grass track in Cleveland to the Tartan Running Track at Olympic Stadium is, serves as a powerful reminder of what can be accomplished with the dedication, perseverance and hard work of an athlete. Reese, your outstanding results on the world stage are not just a personal victory but a triumph celebrated by our community, and we want you all to know that Redland City is behind you as you continue to chase your dreams. We know we'll go on to bigger and better things in the years ahead. I also thank councillor Jason Colly and the Olympics.com website for the updates. with regards to, um, this interim tribute for Reece's success. My next, uh, acknowledgement is for boxer Shannon Davy, who we understand is a current Berkdale resident. Shannon Davy was persuaded by his older brother to try boxing, boxing at the age of thirteen. I remember boxing my older brothers, that was not a great choice for me, but it was for him. And it was only a year or so later that he began to dream of representing Australia at the Olympics. His dream became a reality when he punched his ticket, pun intended, with the unanimous decision over New Zealand's Wendell Stanley in men's seventy-one category at the Pacific Games in the Solomon Islands last December. It was probably no surprise to see Davy make an Olympic, Australian Olympic team with the light middleweight, overcoming more than his share of challenges and still be fighting, let alone at the highest level. Most notably, the two-time Australian champion suffered, suffered a ruptured ACL while training in twenty twenty-one, but still demonstrated his fighting spirit by returning just four months later instead of the expected nine. Incidentally, his ACL surgery was assisted by a longtime sponsor and supporter, uh, sponsor Lee Parish. So that we need to acknowledge the support of those around our athletes as well. In France at the Olympics, the two, the two-time Australian champion came up against a formidable Bulgarian opponent in a round of sixteen bout, which saw the judges award his opponent the victory. Of his Olympic experience, Davy said it was special to have his parents and family there with him. And despite being gutted, in his words, not to win, he knows that they're proud of him no matter what, win, lose or draw. Shannon Davy, you haven't just made your family proud, all of Redland City is proud of you, as well as our nation, which you've represented with pride and determination. So thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Bishop. Uh, councillor Mackenzie, I understand you've got some recognition.
Uh, thank you deputy mayor. Um, firstly, I'd like to acknowledge former Hilliard State School stu-, uh, Hilliard State School and Almiston College student Shayna Jack. Shayna is a woman of resilience, showing great determination to rise from the ashes and work hard to regain her place on the Australian Olympic swim team. The swimming world's eyes turned to Shayna in two thousand and fourteen, when as a fifteen-year-old, she won gold in the hundred metre freestyle and four-by-hundred metre freestyle relay and silver in the two hundred metre freestyle and, and silver in the four-by-two-hundred metre freestyle relay at the junior pan packs. It was from there her swimming career was firmly set in motion. In two thousand and fifteen, Shayna represented Australia at the FINA World Junior Swimming Championships. In two thousand and seventeen, she won four medals, two silver and two bronze as part of four relay teams at the World Championships in Budapest. At the two thousand and eighteen Commonwealth Games on the Gold Coast, Shayna secured victory, winning gold as a member of the four-by-hundred metre freestyle relay team, breaking the world record in the final at the same time. The following year, her career came to an abrupt halt. Shayna, with courage, determination and resilience, fought to clear her name and return to the sport she has loved since a young girl. In twenty twenty-two, Shayna made a remarkable comeback to international swimming, winning silver and gold at the FINA World Championships in Budapest, silver and gold at the Australian National Championships and bronze, silver and gold at the Commonwealth Games in Birmingham. In twenty twenty-three, at the World Championships in Japan, Shayna was part of three world record relay gold medals. She teamed up with Molly O'Callaghan, Meg Harris and Emma McKeon to win the four-by-hundred metre freestyle relay in a world record time. Four days later, the Australian team of Shayna, Molly, Brianna Throssel and Ariane Titmus won gold in the four-by-two-hundred metre freestyle relay in another world record time. Molly was again alongside with Shayna with Jack Cartwright and Cole Chalmers when they won gold in the four-by-hundred metre freestyle relay, breaking another world record. Shayna has continued to shine in twenty twenty-four, securing medals at the twenty twenty-four World Championships with gold in the four-by-one-hundred metre women's medley relay, silver in the four-by-hundred metre freestyle relay, silver in the four-by-hundred metre mixed freestyle relay, silver in the four-by-hundred metre mixed medley relay, bronze in the hundred metre freestyle and another bronze in the four-by-two-hundred metre freestyle relay. After qualifying for Paris Olympics at the Australian Swimming Charles, Shayna won gold in the four-by-hundred metre women's freestyle relay and four-by-two-hundred metre women's freestyle relay. At twenty-five years of age, Shayna Jack is an Olympic and Commonwealth Games gold medalist, a world champion, a world record holder. And on heading to the Olympics, she said, I really wanted to come into this and join the journey, remembering that no matter what, I've put myself out there, gave it my all and basically come away proud of myself. Shayna, she has made herself proud and we are proud of her achievements as well. Uh, nextly, I'd like to recognise Jessica and Naomi Fox. Jessa-, Jessica and Naomi Fox have once again made waves on the international stage with their stellar performances at the Paris Olympics, reinforcing their status as leading athletes in the canoe slalom dis- discipline. The Foxes family ties to Redland City, especially as Naomi is a Redland ratepayer and a member of the Redlands Coast twenty thirty-two Legacy Working Group, make their success particularly resonant with our community. We proudly consider the entire Fox family as honorary citizens, celebrating their contributions both in and out of the water. Naomi started competing competitively when she was fourteen and made her debut into senior international competition at the twenty fifteen World Cup in Poland. She went on to win bronze at the under twenty-three World Championships in Italy and secured her ticket to the Paris Olympic Games after winning an ICF Canoe Slalom World Cup silver medal in Prague earlier this year. Seemingly competing in the shadow of her triple gold medal-winning sister Jess, Naomi won the same heat that eliminated Jess the previous day, continuing her wins in the quarterfinal and semifinal before securing a gold medal in the inaugural kayak cross event. Jess clinched gold in both the women's K one and women's C one events. The Olympic dream has been a constant feature in the sisters' lives with their mother Miriam being a former French Olympic canoe slalom medalist, winning bronze at the nineteen ninety-six Olympic Games. Uh, dad Richard has won ten gold medals at the ICF Canoe Slalom World Championships, three World Cup titles and came fourth in the K one event at the nineteen ninety-two Barcelona Olympics. Their impressive achievements not only add to their outstanding individual legacies, but also shine a spotlight on the broader impacts of their sport. Richard Fox has been a driving force behind the development of the whitewater proposal for Berkdale and Redland City. This ambitious project aims to create a world-class canoe slalom, slalom venue, promising one of the most significant legacies of the Olympic Games. The facility will serve as a resilience training centre for emergency services and support anti-drowning programmes across the southern hemisphere, furthering safety and preparedness for countless individuals. Through their dedication and achievements, Jessa and Naomi Fox have not only elevated the profile of canoe slalom, but also highlighted the importance of the Berkdale project. Their family's commitment to excellence and community development embodies the spirit of Redland City and we look forward to their lasting benefits that their contribution will bring.
Thank you very much councillor Mackenzie. And just for a little revisit, we're just going to jump across to councillor Mitchell one more time.
Um, yeah, yes, I'm sorry, I hadn't put this one in earlier. Um, and raising this person up into the stellar levels of Olympians and international athletes is our own Natalie Rattahan. Um, Natalie, it's her last general meeting for those in the gallery and is, is leaving council off to greater things, uh, well, shouldn't say greater, different and more challenging things. And I'm sure we'll see you back, uh, in the future. Um, Nat-, Natalie is, I think official title is Governance Services Coordinator, um, otherwise known in this room as the chief of everything. Um, um, as I said, this is Natalie's last GM, I think it's tomorrow's last day. And, um, I, I just feel it'd be a shame for us because you're prominent in this room to not thank you for the support to councillors, um, and to council in ensuring these meetings are prepared for well, uh, but then also run so professionally. They, that, that these really are important, uh, statutory meetings and so crucial for our city. So to have someone like Natalie, uh, helping that is great. It's not always easy, sometimes people cha-, challenges, yes, I'm looking at you councillor Mackenzie. Um, and sometimes there's tech challenges, but Natalie's also very, always very professional, very effective, uh, calm and caring persona and quietly effective, sort of like a, um, a great referee on the sporting field. We don't see her, but, uh, you know, she's there just doing, doing the job. So I just wanted to say, hopefully from all of us, we wish you well and I'm sure we'll see you back.
Thank you very much councillors. Um, that was a very comprehensive, uh, coverage and hopefully we haven't missed any, uh, anyone out. But, uh, yeah, it's a great indicator of the wonderful things that can be achieved growing up in a place like Redlands Coast. I would now like to turn our attention again a little bit more internally and acknowledge Steve Oldfield, who is here with us this morning. Steve is, uh, has been working in Redlands Council, welcome. For thirty, welcome to the chamber, I should say, certainly not welcome to council. Uh, has been working in city operations for thirty-five years. And I'm sure we all understand with today's employment, um, trends and the amount of time people stay in a job, that if someone's staying and working and having the depth of knowledge that comes with thirty-five years' service is a great benefit to the community and to this organisation. Steve commenced, uh, on the tenth of July nineteen eighty-nine as a turf services operator and groundsman and continues to be a dedicated member of that team. He is a model Redland City Council employee who is extremely reliable and consistent. Steve is a quietly spoken person who is into his blues music and likes attending blues fests. Hopefully we'll get one back locally soon. He loves his Land Cruiser, as do I, good, good choice, and has it decked out for camping, which he does regularly and was long known around the depot for fantastic VW Combi he would drive. Steve achieved his amateur radio licence and regularly spends time conversing with people all over the, on the works of ham radio when he is in a way on his camping trips. So we're very proud to say thank you very much for your service, Steve. And if you'd like to come up, Steve, we'll very happily present you with your thirty-five years' service badge. Congratulations. Badge is stapled on there, so you can't lose it.
It's a milestone.
It is. Yeah, and turf services, we love turf services. I will, I will get you all together if that's all right. Leave them here a little bit, okay? Get the CEO in closer. Oh, where am I going? Over here. Oh, yes. Yes, that'd be great. I go close up while I'm here and then I'll hop down the bottom. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Yes, sure. That's not exactly a certificate, but. Yeah, that'll do us. Thank you very much. See you later, Steve. Thank you. Sorry, I should have turned my mic off through all of that. Uh, thank you. And as we settle back down, thank you everybody. Uh, I'll get my system back on track. We can now move on to the media part of the meeting, which, uh, is our receipt and confirmation of our previous meeting's minutes. Uh, can I have a mover and a seconder to confirm the minutes of the last meeting, please? Moved councillor Mitchell, seconded councillor Ren Dales. Any issues? Oh, we've lost councillor Hughes. Okay, uh, so, uh, any issues with the minutes? No, well, with that, I put the vote, those in favour. That is unanimous with councillor Hughes absent from the room. Well, we've already done that. Do I have to say it? Every meeting, every vote. Okay, fine. I thought that was pretty much said, but anyway. Councillors, I'll take a moment now to, uh, remind you about, uh, your declaration and prescribed conflict of interest and declarable conflicts of interest um, and your responsibilities in relation to, uh, those conflicts under the Local Government Act. Um, details of your responsibilities are also in your agenda. Please be reminded that all interests need to be declared at a statutory meeting of council. This means any prescribed or declarable conflicts of interest relating to an item being discussed at a non-statutory meeting needs to be declared at the general, uh, or special meeting preceding the non-statutory meeting or workshop. A potential list of items, uh, to be discussed, uh, in your diligent boards. And these declarations can be made at any time throughout the meeting. Do we have anyone that needs to raise any conflicts at this time? No, thank you. Councillor Hughes is back with us. Uh, I'll now turn to our chief executive officer, uh, for matters outstanding from the previous general meetings.
Thank you deputy mayor. Um, the matters outstanding, seven point one, uh, the report on council's programme related to the Environmental Protection and Biodiversity Conservation Act, that is listed as item fifteen point one today. Uh, seven point two, the draft Berkdale Community Precinct Local Government Infrastructure Designation Consultation Report will come to a future meeting of council. Uh, seven point three is the expense reimbursement and provision of facilities for councillors policy. That item is listed today as thirteen point five on the agenda. Seven point four, the notice of motion that, uh, the deputy mayor made on the naming of a trailhead. Officers have now closed this outstanding matter out by working with councillor Toldy to identify appropriate infrastructure to honour Mrs Gail Thomas. That includes a memorial plaque that doesn't require a further park naming council report to come to council. So therefore, this matter will now be removed as a matter outstanding. Uh, seven point five, the review of meeting standing orders. The report is on today's agenda at thirteen point four. And the Redlands Coast Event Strategy twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine will come as a future meeting, uh, to council.
Thank you, CEO. And I'd just like to, uh, note on the matter raised, the naming of a trailhead in honour of Mrs Gail Thomas, that we have worked with the officers and, uh, there will be a, a nice plaque and acknowledgement of all the work that she has done for the community at, uh, Bayview Trail Park Trailhead, which will be a fitting tribute. Thank you. There are no merril minutes. Uh, now moving on to public participation. Uh, and I understand there are some speakers, uh, today. So in accordance with council meeting standing orders for a period of fifteen minutes, um, we can make a resolution to permit members of the public to address the local government on matters of public interest. And we have three, uh, applications from speakers today. So we will need a motion to suspend standing orders. Can I have a mover and a seconder that standing orders be suspended for a fifteen-minute public participation segment to allow those members of the public to address council? Moved councillor Bishop, seconded councillor Mackenzie, all those in favour? And that is supported unanimously. Thank you. Uh, so now we were moving into, uh, sorry? Well, with the exception of our two councillors excused. Uh, you may now, just addressing those members of the public who are about to speak, you may have noticed the signage in the chambers regarding public participation at meetings. It is council's usual practice to require any person wishing to address the meeting to state their name, the suburb or organisation they represent and the subject they wish to speak about. This information is recorded in the minutes of the meeting, which is a public document available for inspection at council's administration building and published on the website. I also advise that the meeting is being live streamed and that by speaking you acknowledge and agree that this meeting can be seen live in the public domain. Any person addressing the meeting will state their name and suburb or organisation they represent and the subject. and the subject they wish to speak about, stand unless unable to do so, act and speak with decorum, be respectful and courteous, make no comments directed at any individual council employee, councillor or member of the public, and ensure that all comments relate to council as a whole. As the chairperson, it is my responsibility to consider each of the applications on merit and the relevant matter, and making a decision to allow or disallow a person to address the local government. Only those members of the public who have an approved application are able to do so. Details on how to apply are on the website. We have determined that there are three speakers today, and we've allowed fifteen minutes, which is a maximum of five minutes per speaker, dependent on those presentations. And I am able to withdraw approval to address council before the time period has elapsed if there is a contravention of any of these rules. The first speaker I'd like to invite is Karen Robinson, co-founder of Bay Island Lifestyle. Thank you, Karen, if you'd like to take the speed. Thank you.
Good morning. I am Karen Robertson. I'm, live in Wellington Point. I'm the enthusiastic owner of Bay Islands Lifestyle with my business partner, Ashley Scott. As you can tell, with my accent, I'm Welsh, but I'm a very proud Wazi, appreciating every part of our wonderful natural Redlands coast. Why, a privilege to live and work. And I can say my office has got a better view than what you've got here at the moment. As part of Bay Islands Water Sport, we have been operating the Redlands coast now for six years. I don't know whether that time has gone, but I'm proud, providing water sport hire and Bay Island coffee. I hope most of you have met us. I'm here to tell you about our exciting news. Twenty twenty-four is the year of accessible tourism in Queensland, preparing us for the Olympics of twenty thirty-two. We are so lucky to be awarded a grant as part of the Queensland Government funding to support delivery of packages and raise awareness about accessible tourism experiences in Queensland and Redlands. We thank the Department of Tourism and Sport for making this a possibility. We are putting Redlands coast on the accessible tourism map with Aqua Accessibility. Let me tell you about Aqua Accessibility. We are very excited to finally announce what we've been going, we've been working on for the last few months. And we are expanding to make water sports even more accessible to all with a whole new level of fit-for-purpose watercraft. Kayaks, double and single with pedal and paddle opportunities, plus outriggers to give that extra stability. We also have purpose-built seated paddleboards, single, tandem and quad bikes, water and beach wheelchairs, and wheelchair beach access mats. Making Redlands coast a premier destination for accessible water activities right here on Brisbane's doorsteps. We have been helping people to enjoy their own water time, but with our experience, we know we could make it more accessible. Aqua Accessibility has made this dream possible. Let me show you a story of a family who experienced a quad bike. Mum, dad and a severely autistic teenager. They went out and enjoyed their time on the water. But to my concern, mum came back crying, tears in her eyes, because it was the longest time her son has ever sat in one place in all his life. Being out on that water calmed him and just made it possible. Sorry, did you still get emotional about that time? This inspired our dream to make water sport accessible to all. And now we're able to roll out that dream, making waves with our new Aqua Accessibility trailer, filled with our purpose-built equipment to ensure new opportunities for all abilities to experience our hires tours classes on our stunning Moreton Bay Marine Park. To enhance our accessibility access tourism, we've enrolled in Hidden Disability Flower Community, as I see a lot of people with. With the help of Redlands Coast Tourism Department, we will be displaying the sunflower symbol with pride to enhance the confidence of customers with hidden disabilities, plus an incredible audio guide created and produced by VCAIT for visually impaired, and accessibility adaption for our website with surge thanks to funding from the Queensland Tourism Industry Council grant. Our vision is to create human-powered moments in nature for every ability. Together, we can make the Redlands a destination where everyone can experience the joy of the Australian beach lifestyle. The Aqua Accessibility Trailer will be available at Abbey Bay for individual and group hires. The trailer is also mobile, so we can cater for exclusive group hires anywhere on the Redlands coast. Thank you again for the Department of Tourism and Sport, Queensland Tourism Industry Council, Brisbane Economic Development Agency, Redlands Coast Tourism and Redland City Council. We also acknowledge the contributions of individual councillors and to the team at Nature's Freedom Sailability for their support of making Aqua Accessibility a reality. We would like to invite you all to our launch on the twentieth of September at twelve PM for our formal launch, and then for our open day on the twenty-first of September. I would like to see you all at the beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs Robinson. And I'd like to also acknowledge your vision in applying for those grants and getting these services up for Redlands community. It's wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you, and right on time, I might add, with two seconds to spare. If I can now invite Kerry Bridge, who is a resident, to take the podium. Thank you, Kerry.
Good morning, Deputy Mayor, councillors, council officers and the public attendees. My name is Kerry Bridge from Alexandra Hills. I am the owner and the applicant for R A L twenty-four, triple zero two, reconfiguring a lot one into six at thirty-nine Dean Road, which has been called into the chambers today. I thank the assessing officers for reviewing and supporting the application, and I appreciate all of your time with the code accessible application. My application was submitted to create five large suburban lots by minimising the impact on neighbours and keeping the bushland amenity of my community. A full arborist and engineering report was conducted and provided to council through the RFI process, addressing all the items in which council were satisfied. Draft conditions were then received in which myself and the community have concerns. One of the draft conditions is for a full curb and channel fifteen metre road, which is a road stub at the full eastern boundary, to be built. This road is not only not reasonably required for, nor relevant as future development to the southern lots is unsupported and inconsistent with the current planning scheme and zoning. A community meeting was held with the residents from Dean and Macmillan Roads. All residents were against the condition of a road stub being constructed, okay? And due to the amenity, and also it's not necessary. My proposed plan was designed to minimise the impact on the neighbours. It shows three crossovers to service five new lots, large lots on Macmillan Road, and to minimise the impact on the verge, removing only seven insignificant smaller trees. The draft condition of the roadworks, including the road stub previously discussed and the widening of Macmillan Road with full curb and channeling, as well as underground power, will significantly impact all of the over fifty established trees along Macmillan Road. Part of the response for information requested by council was a full engineering report. The draft conditions of curb and channel will provide a water outcome. However, the recommendation on the proposed RFI report was to keep the current open swale drain on Macmillan Road, as this improves water management, and the engineers would not have presented it if it was not a preferred outcome. In closing, the conditions by council can be achieved. However, the modified conditions I've presented will provide enhanced overall outcomes and will keep the surrounding amenity and streetscape, which was always my intent with the development application. There are better outcomes that can be achieved, I believe, and these are number one, removing the road stub on the eastern boundary, and use the proposed easement A, which can be widened if required to service all three lots. Number two is to keep the original swale drain on Macmillan, which supports the hydrology and also keeps the beautiful streetscape amenity down Macmillan Road. Number three is to maintain above-ground power, which is consistent with Macmillan Road, and it minimises any tree impact. I thank you again for your time today at this matter, at this general meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs Bridge. We have a third speaker today, Erica McLean. If you could come forward to the podium, Mrs McLean. Thank you. And over to you.
Good morning, and thank you for your time. My name's Erica McLean. I've lived at nineteen Dean Road, Alex Hills, with my husband, Dr John Despot, since nineteen eighty-nine. And the subject that I'm talking about is the same as the previous speaker. The subject is the one-to-six lot change to thirty-nine Dean Road. Since residing here, the zoning has changed from rural non-urban to parkland residential and is now low-density residential two. And truly, if council holds the values of its zoning, then it should really notify residents affected of these changes and collaborate with them. I have a degree in applied science, majoring in biology and chemistry, and a diploma in education. Besides education, I have had practical experience in geology and soil types, biotic and abiotic water quality testing, and animal and plant ecological mapping. You've already received a letter from one of my neighbours that I won't mention, and he has sent you photos of the native animals and around the larger properties of Dean Road, and also the flooding in, in Macmillan Road. I'd like to bring these points for your consideration. A street meeting in Dean Road with over twenty concerned residents from both Dean and Macmillan Roads undeniably rejected the, the whole development proposal. The blocks are core koala habitat, essential habitat under state government, and also have fire and flood zone overlays. The platypus reserve forms part of an important wildlife corridor extending north along Hillyard's Creek, but also west to the Dawson Road Nature Reserve and the Squirrel Creek Conservation Area. The large properties on Dean Road and the ability to move through the significantly sized suburban blocks on the west side of the road allow the animals to acclimate to human impact and move relatively freely currently. Animals also use the grass pathway along Macmillan Road for such migration. Thirty-nine and thirty-three Dean Road have been subjected to multi-tree clearing with the current owners and also with the previous owners, because they were in the hope of development as well. The meeting questioned how that permission was given to cut down those various trees. The west side of the platypus reserve is mainly paperbark. This wallam species only grows in wet areas and is fire resistant, as are most of the other native species there. Past fires in the dry seasons have come halfway up the properties, backing onto the reserve, with embers hitting the houses across Dean Road. In very wet seasons, the reserve becomes a swamp. The fire break along the back of the properties is over knee-deep in water and far deeper behind thirty-nine and thirty-three Dean Road. Macmillan Road takes all the runoff and at times is totally flooded. The lower half of all of these properties on Dean Road is relatively wet with a high water table and wet events. If the development goes ahead, the proposed road at the back of thirty-nine, which we presume is so council could allow further development, is going to be a real problem. It will need to be built very high to withstand flooding. It will act as a dam for that property and cause even more fill needed for housing and greatly increase the flooding and runoff into Macmillan Road. How is council going to deal with this and prevent the damage to both the road and Hillyard's Creek? The amount of runoff from six extra houses built under those circumstances would be impossible to deal with. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mrs McLean. So, with that, councillors, that finalises our public participation segment. If I can have a mover and a seconder to resume standing orders, please. Moved councillor Hughes, seconded councillor Rendals, all those in favour? That is unanimous, noting the two councillors absent today. We move on now to petitions and presentations. We have a number of petitions today, so this will take a little while, I believe. The first petition for presentation is being presented by councillor Mitchell. If I could have you present ten point one, please, councillor Mitchell.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a petition from residents requesting, we the undersigned request that council seriously consider practical strategies in cooperation with the QPS, Queensland Police Service, and work cooperatively to reduce the speeding and noisy vehicles in Shaw Street West adjacent to the Cleveland Rail Station. This may include more enforcement, a fixed speed camera, speed limits marked on the roadway, or any other serious device as the constant excessive speed will cause a serious accident, including a pedestrian death. Screeching brakes is a constant occurrence. Speed-out crashes on the roundabouts are also regular occurrences causing damage to guard fence slash light poles, et cetera. So, I move that the petition is of an operational nature and be received and referred to the CEO for consideration.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder for that? Thank you, councillor Bishop, all those in favour? And that is carried unanimously with the two councillors absent. Next, we have councillor Paul Golee presenting a petition on the cricket pitch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councillors, with your indulgence, this is actually quite a lengthy and detailed petition. To sum it up very quickly before I go into the detail, this is about a continuation of antisocial behaviour and graffiti and vandalism that's happened to one of our facilities down in William Stewart Park, where a cricket team has been using those facilities to play cricket. Now, this is despite council putting in cameras, security patrols, lighting. Every effort has been made to mitigate that antisocial behaviour. So now, I'll go into this fairly lengthy.
Councillor, I'll just note you're not suggesting the cricket team are the people that have done this.
Of course not.
No, just the way it was worded wasn't quite grammatically correct.
I think people would have understood. Okay, so to the Redlands City Mayor, the city infrastructure asset owner, city operations asset manager, civic, open space and division three councillor. Redlands City Council Queensland four one six four, from Redland Royals Brisbane Cricket Club. Dear Sir, public interest participa, participation, sorry, petition against the removal of a cricket pitch from William Stewart Park Thornlands. Redland Royals Brisbane Cricket Club Incorporated is a not-for-profit registered softball cricket club running successfully for the last six years in Brisbane and surrounds. And we were regularly using the William Stewart Park Cleveland from two thousand and eighteen onwards. However, the council has decided to remove the cricket pitch permanently. Since August twenty twenty-two, we, our club, has notified the council about multiple episodes of wilful destruction of ground slash equipment vandalism that were happening at the William Stewart Park. As a result, the cricket pitch slash ground was left unusable, and it remained that way for months. There was no initiative from the local body to get the much-used ground back in shape for the public. The Redlands local newspaper reported all these incidents as well. Subsequently, we have contacted the council requesting some repair works on the pitch. However, the council advised that vandalism is at its peak point, and it was not a good time to redo the cricket pitch. And they advised that the club needed to wait. Also, the council removed the synthetic turf from there and advised us to temporarily move to GJ Walter Park Cleveland. Now, just clarity on the removal of that synthetic turf, it was because it was actually set fire. Later on, when coun, not by the club, by the, by the vandals. Later on, when coun-, not by the club, by the vandals. Later on, when council permit club showed interest to install new artificial turf on that pitch, concrete, the city council didn't encourage that, saying it can be done by council-approved contractors only. On top of that, the club was not in a position to afford the massive five thousand dollar expense, as per city council, it being a not-for-profit organisation, the club, not the council. From the city council, we came to know that the decision to remove the cricket pitch was made collaboratively by officers from City Infrastructure, the asset owner, and City Operations, the asset manager. And the increasing maintenance costs were getting unsustainable for that to be continued. We had to then approach our Division Three councillor, Paul Gollay, regarding the matter. He was happy to contribute within his powers to deal with this issue alongside the civic open space. But they did not accept the civic open space, they did not accept that offer, unfortunately. So, we're back to square one at this stage. As you might be aware, the synthetic turf on the pitch, along with several other infrastructures, suffered significant damages due to vandalism. This included the cricket nets, skate park, shade sale and public amenities. Eventually, the turf on the pitch was removed, so it didn't, or doesn't need to be repaired anymore. In May two thousand and twenty-three, further damage was inflicted on the concrete slab to the cricket pitch. Fortunately, a contractor who was already on site for skate park repairs, they were able to address this damage straight away and do a temporary fix, and then nothing was done on it since. Vandalism happens occasionally in most of the Redlands suburbs, the same way it does in any other place. But if the council starts removing or stops repairing the existing public assets slash infrastructure slash facilities to fight against vandalism, our parks will soon end up as just grasslands. Also, I'd like to bring your attention to one of the expenses listed for our collected rates amount. On the rates notice of Redlands City Council rate notice, this is mentioned, that a hundred dollars of your rates enables the council to deliver a range of services. In that, thirteen dollars, I think that's what they've written here, managing and maintaining open spaces, could be thirteen million, part of the figures is missing, including pathways, parks and conservation areas, sports fields and marine and foreshore protection. Further, on the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five budget, it was given footpath expansions, William Stewart Park Thornlands installation of a one point five metre wide concrete footpath section to connect existing footpaths at William Stewart Park Thornlands construction. So my que-, and this is the residents questioning. So my question is, if the council cannot keep the existing infrastructure, what is the point of adding additional services to the park and collecting money on that note? Most of our cricket club members are local Cleveland Thornlands residents. We all were relying on this only cricket ground in the area, which has now disappeared. Australia has one of the top cricket teams in the world, and it's very disappointing to see local councils not showing any support to the people in the area to play slash train cricket. I slash we hereby respectfully request, this is the residents, request all residents of Redlands to sign this petition to the respected council mayor, City Infrastructure, City Operations, Civic and Open Space and myself, the divisional councillor, to help us to bring back the cricket pitch in William Stewart Park. Thank you, Team Redlands Royals Brisbane. So I'd like to move that the petition is of an operational nature and be received and referred to the chief executive officer for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gollay. Can I have a seconded for that, please councillor Mackenzie and all those in favour? Pardon me. Thank you. That is carried unanimously with two councillors out of the room. Next, we have a petition to be presented by councillor Paul Bishop. Thank you councillor Bishop.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. And I'll just note that in our standing orders, in future petitions will have a word limit of two hundred and fifty words as proposed in our agenda coming up, just for those in the room.
Yeah, sorry Paul, this was a hundred percent from the residents.
Totally understand.
It is fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, just moving on.
Ten point three is a petition with a request to council to establish a hazard reduction programme around Mond Street Thornside. A petition from residents requesting, we the residents of Sixth Avenue Thornside Mobile Home Park have great concern about the amount of undergrowth behind us and would like a hazard reduction programme be initiated, also to have the trees thinned out. Would it be possible to be present when the inspection is carried out? The petition, I'll note, is of an operational nature and to be received and referred to the chief executive officer for consideration. Just by way of context, the land adjoining is partly a bush care site and also partly a residence. So I think there's balance that will be ongoing and considered in relation to this request, but it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bishop. Could I have a seconded for that presentation, please? Councillor Gollay is seconding and all those in favour. And that is unanimous with noting the two councillors out of the room. Next, we have a petition being presented by councillor Shane Rendells. Councillor Rendells.
I have two petitions here.
We'll do them one at a time councillor.
That's right, that's right. The first one's in relation to a short-haul barge service from the southern Moreton Bay Islands to the mainland. Within context, where they're proposing is from the south of Russell Island, which would go across to the mainland just south of the Logan River. So it would hit the mainland in the Gold Coast, pretty much where the power lines run across. The petition reads, residents push for council to invest in short-haul barge services for the southern Moreton Bay Islands, particularly for a service from the mainland to Russell Island return. For context, Port Macquarie Hastings Council have successfully achieved this working with a private operator. It is currently one hour and fifteen minutes from Redland Bay to Russell Island. This could be narrowed down to twenty minutes and would take massive demand off the parking at Wynham Creek, complementing the priority development area and opening up new opportunities. An investment could involve building new infrastructure, including barge ramps at the southern end of Redland Bay and Rocky Point Park for the shortest feasible distance. An investment could also be incentivising private operators to run the service. I'd move that this petition is of an operational nature and be received and referred to the chief executive officer for consideration.
Thank you councillor Rendells. Can I have a seconded, please, for that motion? Thank you, seconded councillor Paul Gollay, all those in favour. That is unanimous, noting councillor Bishop is out of the room and we have two councillors on leave today. And back across to you councillor Rendells. Yes councillor?
Thank you. Councillor Rendells is saying he has two petitions, but there's only one under his name listed here on the agenda, so.
I have two listed in my agenda.
Ten point five?
And ten point four was just presented, ten point five is about to be presented.
My sincere apologies, that is my error, thank you.
Thank you councillor Rendells.
Thank you. This petition is in relation to an off-leash dog park. The petition reads, to create an off-leash dog park in the area near the proposed botanical garden and the resilient centre on Russell Island. It should provide a safe and spacious area for large and small dogs to socialise and play together. For context, the area referred to is near the centre of the island off Robert Street, near the Bay Islands Multisport and Recreation Association and Rickarts. I'd move that this petition is of an operational nature and be received and referred to the chief executive officer for consideration.
Thank you councillor Rendells. Can I have a seconded for that motion, please? Seconded councillor Bishop, all those in favour. Thank you, that's presented unanimously, noting two councillors on leave today. Oh, apologies. I have not been advised of any further presentations from councillors, so we can move on to the order of business. Now, I believe we may have a motion to alter the order of business given the number of visitors we have in the chamber today. Councillor Hughes.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. If I could move that we alter the order of business, bringing forward item fifteen point two, reconfiguring a lot, RAL twenty-four slash zero zero two, for a lot one into six standard format at thirty-nine Dean Road. Thank you. If we could bring that forward for discussion now, thank you.
Do I need a seconded for that? Yes, I have a seconded for that councillor, seconded councillor Boglari. Just for the benefit of those in the, visiting the chamber today, this allows council to bring forward the item that people have come to speak on so that they can hear it and not have to spend such a long time waiting for the item to come up. Councillors, with that, I put the motion, those in favour. That is supported unanimously, noting two councillors on leave. I have asked that the planning officers be on hand to present the matter. I'll just ask, okay councillors, do we need a couple of minutes' break before we commence? We seem to be losing people right, left and centre. Councillors, I'm going to suggest we have a very brief five-minute recess before we commence. Councillors, have I got a mover to have a five-minute break? Thank you councillor Rendell, seconded councillor Boglari. We're just going to suspend the meeting for five minutes while councillors have a very quick pit stop and then we will recommence, thank you. Oh, sorry. That is unanimous, noting that councillor Mitchell and councillor Gollay are out of the room and we have two councillors on leave, thank you. If I can call you to order, please. If I can have a motion to resume the meeting, moved councillor Mackenzie, seconded councillor Gollay, all those in favour. That is unanimous, noting the two councillors on leave today. And with that, we're going to move now to item fifteen point one and, oh apologies, fifteen point two. And before we commence discussion on the item, I'm going to ask our planning officers to present the matter and the department officers' recommendation, if I can, please.
Good morning Deputy Mayor, good morning councillors. In terms of this application, which is the one-to-six application at thirty-nine Dean Road, the key issues identified in the report and the agenda principally relate to the lot sizes and zoning outcomes, design and layout and infrastructure servicing of the site. Just briefly, this is code-assessable development application, so in accordance with the Planning Act, should be assessed against the assessment benchmark outlined in the Planning Act only. Council officers are aware of the relevant history to the. Council officers are aware of the relevant history to the site in terms of the planning policy, amendments and production of city plan. And again, whilst this is relevant in terms of assessing, in making the city, providing city plan and future amendments, obviously what we're looking to do now is a set of development application against those assessment benchmarks that are currently in the planning scheme. As outlined in the report, in terms of making those decisions, obviously we have, you know, regard to interpretation matters which have been raised through court appeals in recent years. And in regard to that, obviously we reference the Saini appeal in terms of interpretation that's been guided in terms of those policies relating to interpretation of consistency. And specifically with regard to the LDR2 overall outcomes, the interpretation of whether the result in lots are consistent with the density and character of the surrounding neighbourhood. So in, with regard to that first issue and that lot design outcomes, officers' report and recommendation deals with that in terms of whether it's consistent. And the first kind of task is identifying that established neighbourhood, and then determining whether or not the proposed development is consistent. In making that decision, as outlined in the report, again, officers have considered obviously the retention of existing house and its frontage to Dean Road, and also the proposed development to Macmillan Road in the context of that surrounding established neighbourhood on the other side of Macmillan Road and the other side of Dean Road, and what that kind of impacts are for the character of the surrounding neighbourhood. Further key issue which was identified related to the requirement for design and layout and the incorporation of the road. Now, in relation to that matter, PO five, which is performance outcome five of the reconfiguration of a lot code, requires development to ensure that future development on adjacent nearby land can occur in an orderly, efficient and cohesive manner. Officers of the view that whilst obviously any future development would be subject to a development application, it was reasonable and necessary to provide an access point in order to enable that to happen in the future. And that's been recommended as a condition of the approval, which is officers' recommendation in the report. Just quickly, in terms of infrastructure servicing, I know there's been a couple of points raised with regard to, from the speakers this morning, with regard to flooding and also to electricity supply. In relation to the swale, there is an existing stormwater infrastructure along Macmillan Road, a six seven five mill pipe which terminates in a chamber, and then it's extended three seven mill pipe, then a head wall, and then it goes to the swale. So there is also, because of the contours of the site, Dean Road goes downhill, Macmillan Road goes downhill, so water runs downhill, and there is an existing problem, or existing flooding experienced on Macmillan Road. So obviously through our assessment, we base our advice on our engineering assessment colleagues who have reviewed the material that's proposed, it's also relevant to point out that there's an existing stormwater easement along the southern boundary of thirty nine Dean Road. So the advice that we've received from our engineering colleagues is that it is reasonable to require an upgrade of the existing pipe solution for the frontage of Macmillan Road properties to address that stormwater issue, and also to look at issues from sheet flows to the south of the property over the lots in terms of along that existing stormwater easement. So under those circumstances, they have requested that their condition be included to require a further stormwater management plan, which will address those issues as part of any operational works application. And that was considered a reasonable requirement in those, in that basis, on that basis. In terms of the overhead electricity, again, we are aware that there is existing overhead in the general vicinity, but the, one of the acceptable outcomes in the planning scheme policy on subdivisions of this size does require the undergrounding of electricity supply. Note the comments made by the applicant with regard to potential impact on trees within the road reserve. You know, it's possible to locate electricity supply clear of trees, to retain trees, to carry out the way, you know, excavation is done and where electricity wires are, or cabling is proposed. So again, it's not necessarily accepted from officers' perspective, and that was considered, and those representations were made through the development application process, and they were considered. But again, in officers' view, it was reasonable and relevant to require a condition for the undergrounding of the electricity supply. So on that basis, in accordance with the agenda, officers' recommendation is to approve the development application, subject to the conditions contained within the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I understand councillor Hughes has a motion, she would like to move.
Thank you, deputy mayor. I would like to move option three, that council resolves to refuse the applications with the listed grounds that are on the screen now to councillors. And this option has been circulated to councillors for their review. And in speaking to that, if I may? Seconded?
I'll just get a second, first councillor Hughes, seconded by councillor Bishop. Okay, go ahead councillor Hughes.
Thank you. In speaking to the alternate motion, option three to refuse the Dean Road application before us today, I would like to share that this parcel of land has a long history of owners applying to council to either subdivide, rezone, or in this particular application today, reconfigure a lot one into six. I would like to share that history that officers' recommendations have been given to us, and going back to two thousand and fifteen sixteen, when the city plan was being drafted, the officers' recommendation at that time, and these are their words, no change, support to retaining LDR2. And the points they gave was the area supports native wildlife, which would be threatened by increased residential development, should not increase residential development in an area threatened by bushfire hazard, the coverage of parts of the site by bushland habitat under the Koala SPRP, and bushfire hazard makes low-density residential development difficult to achieve, the strategic framework seeks to avoid exposure of people and property to bushfire hazard. And the last point in two thousand and fifteen sixteen was that it would represent a spot zoning. Moving forward to December twenty twenty at the major amendments, the land was again put forward with a change of zone from low-density residential precinct, LDR2, to low-density residential, LDR, and a bushland transition precinct. The officers' recommendation at that time was although the zone change requested only applied to thirty nine Dean Road, which is again the case today, it is noted that the LDR2 precinct applies to a pocket of ten properties along Dean Road, hence all properties are being considered as part of this request. And the council considered the request and made the determination to maintain the LDR2 zoning over the entire property. In October twenty one, a submission requesting a zone change was again received. The zone amendment was not supported for the following reasons. Understanding that the words I'm reading are our council officers' words, I've not made any of these up, it's a straight copy and paste. This precinct retains environmental and amenity values and provides an interface between LDR development to the west and the environmentally significant Hilliards Creek corridor to the east. Larger lots of this side also provide an important lifestyle change. Potential spot rezoning should generally be avoided, and the officers' recommendation, option one, maintain the existing zoning, LDR2, zone. But wait, there's more. January twenty twenty two, the assessment on that, the subject lot and adjoining pocket of nine LDR2 zoned lots are located on the edge of a large council-owned bushland reserve that is characterized by high-volume bushland, comprising part of a strategically important Hilliards Creek corridor. The site is identified as containing significant vegetation with approximately a third of the rear of the lot containing matters of local environment, environmental significance. There is also notable support for the retention of this large lot format from residents in the area. Any rezoning of these lots is likely to result in development that is both out of step with existing lot configurations of the street and the public's expectation of the area's zoning. The conclusion was that this pocket of LDR2 zoned lots play an important role in transitioning this expanse of bushland into the urban areas on the western side of Dean Road. Council may consider undertaking a local area planning investigation for this pocket of LDR2 zoned land at a future point in time, once a framework for a local area planning programme has been established. And in January twenty twenty two, for the fourth time, the officers' recommendation was option one, maintain the existing LDR2 zoning.
Councillor, are you nearing your conclusion?
Indeed. Councillors, I urge you to please support this application, this notification that I've moved the refusal at this option three to refuse the application. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hughes. Do I have a speaker against the refusal? Thank you councillor Mitchell.
Yes, I will speak against it. I think a refusal, and I absolutely respect, some of this will be interpretation, and the officer spoke clearly to that. Refusals generally, in my experience in this place, are a dead end to nothing. They're political candy sometimes, the short-term satisfaction because residents might feel great, you know, we've had a win. But I think that often leads to bitter disappointment, and people are let down. In some ways, I think it's a little cruel if we go to refusals, where we probably know through history that planning is not exact, things do change, interpretations change, needs change. And under the Planning Act, the hierarchy goes right up to the state planning policy, the SEQ regional plan and others, which is all noted in the report. So to cherry pick certain aspects is misleading to the community. So, and that does not diminish for a second, the submissions, the interpretations and the opinions that go with it, they are all really, really important in order to come up with a balanced outcome. And a balanced outcome for me is ninety-nine percent of the time approvals with conditions. So it is about working out what the right conditions would be. So an outright refusal, I think, would just do a merry dance, come back to us and end up costing time, money, reputation and more upset for the community. Spare a thought also for those people, if it was refused, that will not get to live in a great home, in a great location, in a beautifully well-designed area. Spare a thought, if we do end up having to go to court and wasting more money, those grants to church groups or environmental groups that won't be able to be given because the money's spent elsewhere.
Just suspend you there for a moment councillor. What is your point of order councillor?
Point of order there, councillor Mitchell would well understand that that's different buckets of money completely.
That is not a point of order councillor, thank you. It's done.
Not speaking to the item at all.
Okay, thank you councillor. Continue councillor Mitchell.
Thank you. And there is one pot of money that comes in, it's called the council budget, and it's only limited, as we know only too well. Also, including people like compliance officers that get funded who may go out there. So there is a price for every decision we make, and sometimes they're not hard. The Planning Act isn't based on emotions and feelings. The P and E Court is not based on emotions and feelings, it's based on the Planning Act and all the elements. So with huge respect to the residents who are against, and the applicant, and all the matters in front of us, that is our job councillors. And it's tough, and it's tough. But I think a refusal is misleading, it's a dead end, and I think the important that we discuss what an approval that is reasonable, fair, balanced with the appropriate conditions, some great information that's flowed in today, and I think there's room to work together on working through that. So I'm hoping that we don't take the short-term option, which I think is the wrong one, of an outright refusal, and we do the hard yards now, rather than delay it, and work on some approval with conditions. I think that's the fair thing for the community, those who are for and also against this particular application.
Thank you councillor Mitchell. A speaker, sorry, for and councillor Goley.
Thank you madam chair. I'll try to be as succinct as I can. So I responded back to residents' concerns when they wrote to me, and I articulated quite strongly the fact that we are bound by a set of legal principles within governance and within the Planning Act, et cetera, that we have to establish what are legal credible grounds in order to refuse an application. So I want the residents to understand that this is what we're actually doing now. So first of all, refusals are not a dead end. And I refer to a refusal that we all stood by in relation to a set of units in Cleveland, where we went up against Queensland Rail, a developer, and the state, and a state-supported application for development.
Going to ask you to move back to the item in front of you. I understand that was an example, but could you please speak to the item?
Thank you. We won that. If we look at the character of the neighbourhood, for example, I mean, I just looked at Google Maps then, it looks pretty open to me. If we look at the zoning, if I was to sit in the P and E Court and listen to what councillor Hughes just presented, it actually demonstrates an ongoing set of principles to maintain what is currently there within the city plan. It doesn't say we're going to cherry pick to put what we like there, and a little bit in the future we'll now just change it a bit and see how we go. It's actually very defined. And if we don't follow the city plan's principles, because this is not just happening here, this is happening in my division as well, where we have these zone codes, and they're just totally disregarded with developers going out there and finding those means to create something, to present to our officers, who are then put into the tough decision to present back to us to go, what do we do? And in the meantime, the residents are getting upset because we're not actually following the city plan of what those zones are. So what's the point of the city plan? The interpretation and the consistency, that seems to be another common thing, interpretation. How do we interpret this? I've seen time and time again now where we've had land changed to be developed, and I make no allegations here, I'm just stating what I've observed in the past, where corridors have been changed because of poor land management practices, and then suddenly it's what corridor I want to change the zone in order to build.
Councillor again.
We need to look at the fact.
Councillor, chair, can you please return to the matter in front of you? Speak specifically.
Thanks madam chair. I think this adds consistency to what we're dealing with in relation to these types of proposals. I fully intend to support councillor Hughes on this matter. I think we need to stick to what the zone code is. I think to simply say, we'll just throw up to the wind, refusals don't work. The idea here is for councillors to actually establish the legal planning grounds in order to present to the P and E Court. I think there is enough strong evidence there based on historical data that councillor Hughes has presented, to actually show in the P and E Court that even our own officers have said, keep it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. I will move on to a speaker against, but before I do, there were a few statements, there I'll ask the planning officer just to note, stand up and clarify about this not following the city plan, disregarding zone codes, and. the city plan, disregarding zone codes and this statement about this being the officer's view. Thank you.
Thank you deputy mayor. If I can just clarify, a lot of the information was presented in the report, including the agenda items. So obviously, as I said to start with, there's a code assessable development application where the Planning Act sets out that we must make decisions only in accordance with the assessment benchmarks, or paraphrasing, in the relevant code. Now, a lot of the information which councillor Hughes has referred to with the historical relates to the city plan formulation over a number of years, from 2016 through to its adoption in 28 and then subsequent proposed amendments in terms of that were put forward in relation to a general amendment package. And that's right and proper, that was the officer's view at the time with regard to policy formulation. If I can clarify what I was referring to when I presented originally, was that in 2022, which is after all of that, there was a court decision, the Planning and Environment Court, which was in relation to a subdivision of a development application in Hague Road, and is referred to as the Saini Appeal. Now, in that particular appeal, that was an LDR1 precinct, so it wasn't an LDR2, but it's the same kind of principle. Now, what that looked at, and again, just to kind of provide some clarification around that matter, when the planning scheme was coming into adoption, there were prescribed limits, 400 metre square metre blocks in the relevant codes, you know, 2000, 6000. In adopting, and the minister, in undertaking the review prior to adoption, amended that wording to make reference to the requirement to, you know, minimum lot sizes unless the development was consistent with the established surrounding neighbourhood. So the minister actually put those words into the city plan that was ultimately adopted by council. Now, going back to that Saini Appeal and the Planning Appeal before the Planning Environment Court, just to provide some context in relation to that, what that appeal hinged on was really looking at what does consistent mean and what does the surrounding residential neighbourhood mean? So again, the view was taken that it's not necessarily just a specific precinct, but you have to look at what you consider in each individual instance to be the established neighbourhood. So policymaking over here, Planning and Environment Court, decision-making on development applications over here. This is what we're doing now today as council, and what officers' recommendation is in its report, is to consider those factors. So as set out in council's report and officers' report, we've tried to establish what we consider is established residential neighbourhood. We've looked at the frontages of the site and the proposed layout, that again, I alluded to in my opening statement with regard to Dean Road, McMillan Road, properties on the other side of the road etcetera. And again, we're obviously assessing the impact of the development application in the subject site. So again, that's not the whole precinct, as was the case in the rezoning and the original consideration, the planning scheme policy preparation, we're just looking at this particular site. So it's within that context that officers have made their recommendation contained within the report.
Thank you very much. Moving to a speaker against councillor Mackenzie.
Thank you deputy mayor. I completely understand the sentiments of the local councillor and the residents in the area in that when you look at the zoning and it says, you know, the lot sizes are to remain at 6000 square metres, but there is that constant caveat that we are faced up against unless it's consistent with the surrounding area. When I look at this map, I see a property with two-street frontage and directly opposite the road is two 600 square metre lots, a 700 square metre lot, a 793 and an 881. What this applicant is proposing is a 1200, 727, 744 and two 1100 square metres. So larger than the lot directly across the road from it. And thank you to the officer for raising Hag Street, because I look at this and see it as very similar, where we did try and stand up against that one and the resident got their one into four that they wanted. So I cannot, looking at that caveat that says consistent, you know, unless it's consistent with the surrounding area, what is directly across the road, the history that we have constantly had with the Planning and Environment Court, where we refuse these types of applications, and it does go to Planning and Environment Court, and the one that councillor Golei referred to at the train station, I believe is the exception, the majority of them end up getting approved with conditions. And I echo councillor Mitchell's words in that if we refuse this today, we are kicking it down the road, it will end up costing ratepayers more in legals to then negotiate this out in Planning and Environment Court, where we could resolve this today in approval with good conditions. So I won't support councillor Hughes's motion for an outright refusal, but I will support a approval with good conditions, and I believe that's also potentially on the table if councillor Hughes's refusal is not supported.
Thank you councillor Mackenzie. And a speaker for the motion, councillor Bishop.
Thank you deputy mayor. I do support councillor Hughes in regard to the consistency of council's views on this particular property and the various applications that have come to us with regards to a range of different applications, looking at subdivision, rezoning and now reconfiguration of a lot. And the consistency that council has applied is that under code assessment, this is LDR2. And so with regards to the proposed alternate motion that we're debating now, density and character of the surrounding neighbourhood, I think it's really important that we acknowledge this councillor Mackenzie has just noted that there is LDR to the west, there is LDR to the north. I was the divisional councillor in regard to the application in Hague Road, and while I and residents still maintained that it was not consistent, that was overruled by the courts, I think what's different in this instance is the inherent nature of the bushland which adjoins. There's a couple of matters that I'll speak to with regards to that, but the concern is with this application is the introduction of some heavy infrastructure with regards to the introduction of a road, with regards to curb and channeling, with regards to engineering and requirements for electrical, which may not have impacts, but the likelihood is, you look at curb and channeling, you look at the sorts of things of introductions of this kind and trees go. Their root structure is impacted and there are real concerns in an area where the natural environment that joins this does have an orderly sequential city plan overseen consistency with our code that inhabits the buffer of this natural blend from this bushland through LDR2, which is 5000 square metres and above, into LDR, which is further to the east. I understand we are bound by the code application that the officers, and I understand why the officers have gone down the path that they have with the Saini Appeal in the background. I think in this context, the consistency of this council has always been that we retain LDR2. So under code assessable, I think we have very strong grounds to defend that with regards to density and character of the surrounding neighbourhood. It is different, and I believe it is not consistent with the character and density of the surrounding area when you consider that bushland. And then there's the impacts on the residents and the various species that have been identified as being high-value bushland habitat with significant vegetation. And then you consider the bushfire hazard. I'm also concerned that if we do introduce a road to the east, that that will create an engineering, apparently considered by engineering terms to be a buffer, but it effectively opens up like a zipper the rest of the land to the south. It also puts a hard infrastructure barrier to any of the natural flow between the animals that might go through that area and that, as was raised by the speaker, the natural transition from that habitat to the residential area that is to the east. I'm concerned about the intensification, I'm also concerned about the need for us to retain the LDR2 Park Residential Precinct character of the area, which is also in this refusal. And I understand that the current owner has the right, we have to accept any application that comes to council, I also understand their right to bring it to council. But I think the background and history of those who have sought to have council change its view, they've changed the balance of the land, not this owner, but previous owners have removed vegetation in a speculative approach to move to where we're now faced with the same decision. I think if we approve this, we will be faced with a legacy that is a concern which is against what our intention is for city plan. I note that we have to do code assessment, but my concern is that if we do this and perpetuate this Saini Appeal and holding the surrounding character of the neighbourhood principle, we are actually endorsing what will become the opening up of a whole heap of unsequential proliferation of subdivision that is not going to maximise the benefit to this city. In future, we may adjust and we may seek to protect these urban bushland adjacent properties and put intensification elsewhere in order to make up that, but I don't think we should be doing it in these buffer transitional zones. I'm concerned about that, very concerned about the suggestion of the road and the intensification of engineering and infrastructure, which would be the result of an approval of this application. So I'm speaking in favour of the refusal with councillor Hughes. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bishop. Do I have a speaker against? Thank you councillor Colley.
Yeah, thank you deputy mayor. I would like to thank councillor Hughes for her investment in this. I know that she's done a great deal of consultation with her community and she is considerate of the views shared by the local residents there. And I certainly respect the time and effort that she's put into bringing this before us today. I think it's important that we as councillors look at this solely in terms of this block which is being developed. And the address for this property in question is 39 Dean Road, but for all intents and purposes, it's on McMillan Road. There's no doubt that the new lots which will be created will be addressed as being on McMillan Road. So I think that we need to ensure and we need to assess this with a lens which looks at the proposed development and the lots created being consistent with those on McMillan Road. Those directly opposite, as outlined by councillor Mackenzie and the officers articulated as well, they are certainly consistent with what is being proposed as a result of this development. I understand that there are some concerns about the environmental impact, but I think that what's proposed here with the two end lots, lot 395 and 396 being 1100 square blocks, will certainly go some way to mitigating the environmental impact with this development. I'm also cognisant of the fact that we need to look at this being a defensible position for council. And an outright refusal, which goes so strongly against the advice provided by our officers, is something which I think is going a little bit too far. And we can assess this with conditions that are favourable for us, giving us a defensible position.
Thank you councillor Colley. Do I have any more speakers for the motion? Thank you councillor Boglari.
It's like Groundhog Day. We're debating the same issues that we debated many, many years ago and then several times along the way, as councillor Hughes has stated. A lot of this to me is like a personal opinion. To talk about merry dances and to speculate personally on the outcome of the court is just one person's opinion. And when we look at this, and if you look at the map, my personal opinion is that at the present, it is in the amenity of the area. And if we change it to the actual blocks proposed, then it is outside that area. In performance outcome PO5 of reconfiguring a lot code, the reconfiguration integrates with the surrounding locality and creates an attractive, accessible and functional neighbourhood. There are three points, connecting to and extending movement, open space, recreational and infrastructure networks, and importantly, maintaining the continuity of habitat areas and ecological corridors. That's actually a performance outcome. Creating a compatible landscape and street state character, again, is a performance outcome. The environmental corridor which runs to the east of these blocks is our major spinal corridor for Redlands City. Our environmental corridors is something that not only these residents, but the whole city cherishes and adds value to our homes and our actual physical and mental health. To me, this is picking off. If we take this block away and we put a road in along the back, it is, as councillor Bishop has stated, it's unzipping those other blocks. And I don't see the need for us to do that in such a valuable area. We are putting higher density into our less vulnerable areas. Recently, we put a lot of high density into an area in Wellington Point, but there wasn't an environmental corridor there. So when we're talking about affordability and diversity of housing, we are allowing that throughout our city without eroding away our environmental corridor blocks. These blocks are zoned LDR2, they are supposed to remain the larger blocks. Representing the community is not political candy, the community want it to remain as it is. And without these buffers, it's like if a pizza gets put in front of me, there's no way I can eat that whole pizza, but I could certainly eat one piece at a time and within an hour it's gone. That's the same as this. When we start eroding these buffers to our environmental corridors, it then sets a precedent and over the next few years, I can bet there'll be other going in there as there are ownership changes. I totally support councillor Hughes. She has articulated to us in workshops and along the journey of this one, all the issues, they're the same as what we have fought previously. And I really urge councillors to think, with planning, if we are going to go against the planning scheme, what we have to weigh up is the community outcome. And in this case, the community outcome is to have it remain as it is, the best outcome.
Thank you councillor Boglari. Any further speakers against? No, I think with that councillors, you've mostly all had a natter. So I will ask councillor Hughes if she'd like to sum up.
Thank you, but I'm a bit cross at councillor Bishop because he obviously read over my shoulder and had access to my notes because basically word for word councillor Bishop and councillor Boglari. But please just, I've only got a couple of paragraphs here, I won't be long. So I'm just reiterating that this property has already been voted on by councillors at least four times that I'm aware of to remain as an LDR2 zone. And I would like to highlight a couple of points. And the report mentions that a similar development application that was refused as our officer has described to us and the subsequent court case being lost by council, which incurred significant court costs. We're all very aware of that and we take that into consideration. But I would like to highlight that whilst this development application may indeed seem similar at first glance, that is not the case, as the lost court case was on Hague Road, Berkdale, and that property backed onto residential properties and the St Mary McKeelip Catholic Primary School. Dean Road is truly unique, it is zoned LDR2 and backs onto Hillyard's Creek Corridor. That is why I am emphasising the character of the area as grounds for refusal. And I'm sure that if this application is rejected and goes to court, our decision will be very defensible, as council will have strong grounds to support this refusal. And please don't let the thought of an expensive court case sway your decision. If the development is approved, as noted in the report, there is potential for further subdivision of land within this precinct. And councillor Boglari just articulated that. And as discussed, this area is unique, it is a stepping stone and should be valued in its context. Please don't underestimate that this is something that council has fought for, for years. And with the development approval comes a set of conditions. And one of those conditions is that a road dedication and hardstand be built at the back of the property. back of the property, directly adjacent to the Hillyard's Creek Corridor, in anticipation of said future development. And that would create a potential for a new road all the way along that corridor. With the abundant wildlife already under extreme pressure, this outcome is intolerable. And as the residents of Dean Road and the neighbouring residents who all attended the street meeting to discuss this application last Sunday afternoon, there were about 34 residents, including the owners and the applicant of this development that's also in the room and has spoken to us, who live and intend to continue to live in the street, the outcry over the proposed road was very loud and clear, a resounding and absolute no. If option three, which is before you now, is rejected, and this application, this application that I've put forward, the motion, is lost, I foreshadow that option two be considered with amended conditions. So please councillors, I seek your support to reject this application outright.
Thank you councillor Hughes. And with that, I put the vote, those in favour of councillor Hughes's motion to refuse. That's the vote is, supported by councillor Boglari, councillor Gole, councillor Rendles, councillor Hughes and councillor Bishop, which on my summing up makes it carried?
Those against.
Sorry, those against. Councillor Mitchell, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Colley, councillor Talty. Therefore, the motion is supported and the matter is refused. Okay, moving on now, we return to the normal layout of our agenda. Just excuse me while I get back into my agenda. Sorry, we're on 13? Oh, okay. Right. Okay councillors, we have a late report that has come in, you might have to go in and out of your diligent boards to get to the report for 13.1 if you are looking for it. And I'm looking for councillor Mitchell will move, I have a second up for the motion, officers' recommendation to note. Councillor Colley, is everybody good to go with their financial? Okay, thank you councillor Mitchell.
Thank you deputy mayor. Yes, noting this is for the July 2024 monthly report, so, and also noting it is the first month of the financial year. The figures will adjust into the future because they haven't been audited as yet, so there's still, QAO still needs to do their work and certify it, it will come back through in September. I will note a couple of things, but probably shadow a, I think because it's the first month of the year and there's often some, a little bit more red ink or wild swinging figures early on as the first month of the year comes through. So the financial officer may wish to do a better job of explaining the whys of this because it really isn't for any concern, but it is certainly for understanding in the community. But during the month, council made a very wise debt payment of six and a half million dollars on its loans to the Treasury Corp. And that saves an awful lot of money for us over the years. But also noting council's capital works expenditure is ahead of budget by 3.88 million dollars. There's also comments on the asset sustainability ratio, but I might hand over if I may through the chair, through to the chief financial officer representative to explain the first month's figures.
Thank you councillor, I'll just note we have a new chief financial officer, Sandra Bridgeman, welcome. But as Sandra, oh, officer Bridgeman is just finding her way at the moment, our financial controller, Peter Patterson, will speak to the matter please.
Thank you very much deputy mayor and thank you councillor Mitchell for your question and the opportunity to give an overview of these accounts. So look, I might just start by saying I'm very pleased to say that we've kicked off the financial year with a very strong start. We've got a, as you noted, a very strong, continued strong financial position and balance sheet, as well as consequently and also further strengthening that, a strong financial performance for the year. So to illustrate that, I might just ask you to please refer to the executive summary page, page three of 14. At the top of that page, we've got a table which councillor Mitchell, you rightly highlighted that there is a bit of red ink on there. And I might just take this opportunity to step through those because I'd like to provide some context because it doesn't look like a good story, but it is actually a good news story. Yep, that's the table, thanks Nat. So we've got six key lines here in the financial results. I'll just start from the top and we'll work our way down. So as mentioned, operating surplus, we have a very strong financial performance here of $45 million for the year, for the year to date, which is the month of July, which is favourable to budget by 1.3 million dollars. Now, keeping that in mind, if we just drop down to the recurrent revenue, this is where, sorry, just the next line, thanks Nat. The recurrent revenue there, that's unfavourable by 1.2 million dollars. That is purely due to water consumption. So when officers, we've got a financial modelling team and that team uses a lot of assumptions, historical trends, short term, long term information we get from the Bureau of Meteorology as well as rainfall and cooler temperature data, to model what we believe would be the water consumption throughout the year and at different stages through the year. So unfortunately, it's not a perfect science and July bucked the trend and it did result in a reduction in water consumption. But equally there with that thought in mind, if we drop to the next line, recurrent expenditure, when we sell revenue, we also have to buy, sorry, when we sell water, we also have to buy the water. So we've got an equal and opposite reduction in, a favourable reduction in recurrent expenditure there being the bulk water purchased from SEQ Water. So just wanted to highlight that, that red cross on revenue might look alarming, but it's not, it has a nil net effect to council's financial performance. The other items there making up that favourable variance on the expenditure is purely just timing of general contractors and consultancy fees, which is typical at this time of the year as we're starting our works. Coming down to the capital works expenditure line, we've had a stellar start to the year, we've almost doubled the budget and it's purely timing, but that's nothing of concern. We've got our portfolio, our capital programme which we intend to deliver, so that will just amend and moderate as the year progresses. And then going down to the next line, closing cash and cash equivalents, another unfavourable line there. Now, that does look alarming when you first lock it at $50 million down on budget, but to give a little bit of context, on the statement of financial position or balance sheet, we've got an increase in trade receivables and also a decrease in trade creditors. So what that indicates is purely timing of when we expected from a budget perspective to receive money and when we expected to pay money, but has a nil effect on the balance sheet and that will true up over time as we approach, as we progress through the financial year. And then lastly, that short term investment there, nil movement to budget, we've got that $50 million term deposit with CBA which matures in October and at that point in time we'll reevaluate and try and obtain more risk free interest income to the community. While I'm here, I just might touch on councillor Mitchell's comment to do with the debt repayment. So we, historically, we have been making and continue to make the service payment on debt in the month of July, that's purely to reduce interest and it has a significant impact on the reduction of interest that we pay. If we chose to pay on a month to month basis, it's quite significant over time. So that's a conscious decision that we make for the community and we've continued to do so. And while we're on the same page Nat, if you don't mind scrolling down to the key performance indicators, I just want to highlight this. This table of financial sustainability measures, you may recall from the May general meeting, councillor Hughes asked me a question of, is there a list or a priority order of these measures? And the answer was, no, there's not, but they are grouped by type of measure. So what we've done to start the new financial year is we've put that first column in type to categorise those, I think that's more wholesome for the reader. So we've got financial capacity, operating performance, liquidity, asset management, debt servicing, capacity and level of debt. And while I'm here, I'd just like to highlight that we either met or exceeded all of our KPIs bar the asset sustainability ratio, but that there, because we're so early in the year, it's just about timing. So the works that we've delivered so far in July have been more of a non-renewal or non-infrastructure basis, which is what drives that formula. But as you can see in the annual original budget column, we expect to end up after delivering our capital portfolio in 82.3%, which is over 20% greater than the target. So I've got no concerns, just as we progress through the year, that will start to change. With that, happy to take any further questions.
Thank you very much. Do I have a speaker against the officers' recommendation?
Thank you. I just wanted to touch on the constrained cash reserves, they're creeping up again, sitting at 65%. And I know again, it's always cyclic, but you know, we've spoken about those constrained cash reserves many, many times in this chamber. And that 65% of our cash holdings, that's a high percentage. So I'd just like to ask yourself, Peter?
Councillor, just ask your question and we'll work out who answers it.
Where are we going with this 65%? Have we got eyes on this? Thanks.
Thank you through you deputy mayor, thank you councillor Hughes for the question. As mentioned before with the cash balances, that is, has come down purely due to timing of trade payables and trade receivables, which directly influences that percentages ratio. So we've also, the capital programme that's been delivered to date might not have been able to draw on those reserves, but we have forecasted for the end of the 24, 25 year to be at a more healthy position. So I think it's purely just timing and I would give it time as we progress through the financial year and you'll start to see that figure improve.
Thank you councillor Hughes. And CEO, would just like to add to that please.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank publicly Peter Patterson, who's been our acting CFO for some months now, he's done a sterling job, welcome Sandra, but I really wanted to put on the record our thanks to Pete for the work that he's done. He's absolute consummate professional, so thanks on all of our behalf Pete.
Thank you. With that, did you need to sum up councillor Mitchell?
Very briefly, and the, who would have thought the financial projections like the weather, we're not a perfect science and they were both related. But look, it is great to know that we're in such a sound position and while we may disagree or get troubled by planning matters or an operational thing from time to time, they're really important, but gee, the underlying financial health of this city is something I think we can all be so proud of and that's testament to councillors, but also the quality of the financial services and all the LT we've had here. So I think it's great for the community.
Thank you. And with that, I put the motion, those in favour? And that's carried unanimously, noting we have two councillors absent today. Right, I believe we have a amended motion for 13.2.
Thank you deputy mayor and chair. I'd like to move the officers' recommendation for item 13.2, which council resolves as follows. Point one, to adopt the revised budget, including the additional operating requests. And point two, to meet the requirements of the local government regulation. Point three, to note the continued impacts that global supply chain issues are having. And four, that council officers will continue to regularly analyse the progress of the original 2024, 25 capital programme, et cetera.
Thank you. With that, do we have a second up? Thank you councillor Boglari. Do we have a speaker?
I'll speak to it.
Right, you haven't finished?
No, I was just moving the motion, thank you for checking. I'd just like to move this motion, annually, we do have an opportunity to adopt a budget and I note that 10 of us spoke very strongly in support of the budget this year. It's a transitional budget, given that we have some new councillors, a new mayor. It's also an opportunity with moving to the annual two to three year rolling programme for our capital works, to consider the impact on the organisation as we move into a new footing, looking at managing all of those things. And officers have come to us with a very sound and reasonable and atypical request for some additional operating requests in terms of a few roles. And I think it's worth noting, some of those roles will add real benefit to the sorts of trajectory and works required for the future of this city, our organisation and the workload on staff. We know it's a very stressful time for retention of staff and we want to make that as easy as possible, but also as beneficial for our community as possible. I'll speak first, if I may, to the AORs in relation to item one, which is in reference to what's referred to as an RPAC producer. And when I refer to RPAC producer, council managers, owns, operates RPAC, Redlands Performing Arts Centre and also Redland Art Gallery, they're two critical organisations that offer great benefit for arts culture in our city. This request is to actually additionally work beyond that to bring to life many other aspects of our city with regards to other parts of the city, other potential places, events, programmes, workshops that celebrate local identity and engage our communities and visitors. It aligns programmes and events inside our RPAC, our libraries and also Redland Art Gallery, but also beyond. And I know they're things that the councillors are greatly appreciative of and would like to see more of and I hope we retain that officer. Notably, they also do touch on cultural matters of significance in our city and that's not just to do with our First Nations, which when we talk glowingly about the Olympics, I think it's going to be very important for Redland City that our First Nations people, the Kwanzaa people and other First Nations are seen internationally as a very important part of coming to Redland City and preparing for culturally appropriate works, programmes, art forms and culturally appropriate expressions and partnerships. Having that extra role, supporting those sorts of things will help with things like extra surveys. And this is more broadly, we speak also about our Anglo and Celtic multicultural background. There's so many aspects to supporting the arts, advocating for a role and I certainly encourage us to support that. The second one is regard to an environmental officer with GIS mapping. We've got lots of emergent challenges across the city, we've got EPBC matters of significance and concern that needs to be addressed.
Councillor, I'll just let you know you're at your time limit, if you could wrap up please.
I'll move, I'm not at my time limit, just checking with the head of governance on that, I'm not there yet? Thank, I'm just checking with governance. Okay, we'll stop the clock for a minute and can I just get a clarification if I may? Just on, through the chair through?
No, just one more minute councillor.
Let me just wrap up, thank you very much for your ruling. I also think that the GIS mapping is very important so that we can get understanding of the sorts of things that are emergent, fire ants, all sorts of things across our city. Mapping and having greater clarification is going to be very important. Public art is something that I think we're all interested in and having an officer who can oversee and support broader things that we refer to as the RPAC producer, I think will also help that and give us more background and information with regard to feedback from our community. Thank you very much, I'll leave it at that at this point.
Thank you councillor. Do I have a speaker against councillor Mackenzie?
I'd like to move an amendment to that motion please, deputy mayor.
Yes, I think that we already have that available there, thank you. So we now have an amendment to the motion put forward, so we'll be discussing the proposed amendment.
Point of order if I may?
Yes councillor.
Just in process, we have a proposed amendment, I'm just wondering if we're going to go through the process of voting for that?
Yes, of course we are, this is what we're moving to. I just said that literally.
Thank you, I'll stand down.
Thank you. So we have a minor amendment there. Do we have a second up for that amendment?
No.
Yes, we have to discuss it, we have to vote on it.
We don't have to vote on the first motion, we've discussed this before, this is now an amendment to the motion.
I please ask for clarification from governance rather than us all having our two cents worth.
About what councillor?
About process here, because I thought the original mover of the motion had to accept whether it was a minor or a major change to the motion. But it amends the...
Councillor, I've ruled on it, thank you. Okay.
It's a major amendment, not minor.
Councillor, I've ruled on it, thank you.
Point of order, Chair?
Yes, councillor.
Number eight, six, one, only one councillor should speak at a time and must not interrupt another councillor or speak over the chair. Can we have a bit of decorum?
Sustained, and thank you councillor. You're seconding the proposed amendment, is that correct? Yes, so proposed, the amendment is proposed by councillor Mackenzie and seconded by councillor Mitchell. Councillor Mackenzie, would you like to speak to your amendment, please?
Just briefly, I certainly spoke at the special budget meeting that I was supporting the budget at the time, knowing that the additional AORs were coming back to us, because there were several that I didn't support. There are still several that I don't support that are moving forward. In my opinion, I don't believe that these AORs are necessary at this time, given the constraints that people have on their family budgets. And so I'm proposing to remove these AORs, which will also bring our budget back into a favourable position.
Thank you councillor, noting that there are quite a number of additional operating requests. This only refers to removing three out of a large number, as I understand it. Do I have a speaker against the amendment? Sorry, councillor Bishop.
Yeah, first...
Councillor, I'll ask councillor Bishop to hold. What is your question, councillor Hughes? Is it a process question or is it a question on the item?
A question on the item, thank you. The, I just wanted to seek clarification of officers, I'm not sure if we've got in the room.
Can you just ask me first, councillor Hughes, please?
The item to the environmental officer, the GIS mapping.
Yes.
I just wanted to seek clarification, because I think there was originally, we talked about two GIS.
Yes, there are two GIS requests for GIS qualified officers and one is included to move forward and one is suggested to be removed, so...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Bishop.
Yeah, first of all, I'll just note that this, in terms of impacts on residents, is not an additional to what has been adopted in our budget. It's actually already costed and considered and carried forward, so it's not additional to that. So in regard to impacts on cost of living, I think that the intent is that to manage the work that's required for this city going forward, these will actually result in not only net benefit savings over the long term, it will help us with our administrative matters, certainly with regards to the GIS mapping, will help us with data sets that are going to be increasingly important in this challenging environment that we're moving into with greater other levels of government expecting us to be clearer about our city and our naturally wonderful estate that we do manage. And I think the GIS mapping will be very important for that. RPAC producer, the benefit for that role could bring incredible benefit and place-making and people and their connection to this city. I think having someone on the ground who is able to support that, I think, as I mentioned previously, support for that role is very important in terms of, there are so many things in terms of extending the reach of Redlands Coast activation in alternative spaces, supporting the growth and delivery of services. We've got lots of community groups that are looking to augment through grants, not only one-off grants, but they're looking to extend those things and have more meaningful connection with their communities. I think this role will support that. So I would very much like to support the retention of the RPAC producer, the environmental officer and all of those AORs, which while additional to council's previous BAU, have come from our offices as a reasonable request, they've given us many grounds and background information as to why they are essential to the works going forward. And I think councillors need to listen to our executive officers, trust their neutral, objective requirement to get on and do the work that we're asking them to do. And I think that's all that they're asking. So I request that we go back to the original motion from the officers. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bishop. Do I have another speaker for the amendment? Just one moment councillor Colley. Do I have a speaker for the amendment? No, no more speakers, thank you. Question councillor Colley?
Yeah, question for officers through you. The second and third positions on the comprehensive list here are both in the environment and education unit. Can some of these responsibilities of these positions be shared if only one of these positions is carried forward?
Through you, through you Mayor to councillor Colley, thank you for the question. They are different roles and they do fill different purposes. So the GIS mapping is looking at that geographical, spatial mapping and analysis. The sustainability officer works more in the climate change space and developing in that work. So they are different roles and different skillsets in those positions.
If I can add to that though councillor Colley, the sustainability officer is not proposed to be removed, that's being supported in this amendment. And the GIS technical officer that is being removed from this request is one of two GIS officers, and we will still have one who can support both departments. Thank you.
Sorry, can we just confirm that through you again to the general manager?
I'll ask legal counsel, I believe.
Thank you Chair. Look, to be fair, it would be better to ask the operational officers.
I'm just looking to confirm that the numbered items refer to those roles that I just noted.
And the question was whether there is an existing GIS environmental officer? It's not counselling the existing position, it's only counselling an additional GIS environmental officer?
Yes, but in the budget proposal today, included in both the previous motion and the current proposed amended motion, there is another GIS technical officer position proposed, which is not proposed to be removed. So out of the additional operating expenses, there were requests for two GIS officers, one in the planning department and one in the environmental education department. And this is not proposing to remove both, only one of the new positions.
Thank you Chair, that's correct.
Thank you. Does that answer your question councillor Colley?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, is yours also a question councillor? Okay, I had... Question councillor Bishop?
Yeah, just in...
Sorry, have we gone out of informal?
No, we have followed in formal process. I asked for speakers against, I asked for speakers for, there were none. I moved to questions, we are now in questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Might as well further clarification through the chair, if I may. The GIS mapping or spatial officers, is it work that can be crossed over or are there different disciplines that are required in terms of the work that's needed? Because there's an assumption that I was hearing from yourself as Chair, that these could be a split role and that the workload could be managed. I'd just like to hear that from the officers, that is that, are they not substantively different in terms of the expertise that they bring to that data?
Officer Simpson possibly could answer that.
Good morning councillors. So the question is, there is some shared skillsets. So certainly from the GIS IT perspective, the roles would have a shared skillset. The difference, I would say, is that the position proposed for the environment education unit also has an environmental background to it. So it's, to put it in, I guess, layman's term, being able to use that environmental knowledge to apply it to the GIS skillset is important. So that's probably the subtle difference between the roles.
Thank you, that's very helpful. So the technical skillset is shared, but the interpretation, which is substantive to how to take that data and apply it for our city, is different.
Thank you councillor, you're just repeating what the officer said, so I'll close that off now. Do you have a question now councillor?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, thank you. If there's someone that could answer an RPAC question for me, I'm actually in favour of keeping the RPAC producer in. And my question is, would this new position allow RPAC to be more innovative and expand to reach full potential while supporting our arts community as it is the largest attract to our Cleveland CBD? And I believe it's a strong economic driver.
Point of order Deputy Mayor?
Yes, it was a complex...
That was a question, it actually...
Councillor, it's sustained, it was a complex question, but we'll just move on and ask an officer to respond. Councillors, please, no more cross-chamber discussion.
Well, please don't look at me when you say that, because I actually had the floor, I was the one who was interrupted.
Thank you councillor, I've asked for your question to be answered.
So, Deputy Mayor, if I can respond, and I do have my creative arts service manager here, if you'd want further information. But the associate producer role is a new role that we are seeking from council. You will recall that when we came back to provide additional information to councillors was requested through the budget process, that we advised you that we currently deliver through RPAC two hundred and twenty-seven venue hires in twenty-three, twenty-four, that's about, you know, four point three a week, and that's via one booking officer. That doesn't include some of those other hires, for example, in terms of RPAC presents and cultural development. What we're looking to be able to achieve, and I'll also probably regret doing this, but I will remind you that you did talk about this being a two-year role as opposed to a permanent role, so it was a trial role. We are hoping that this position will actually be able to generate revenue, but perhaps over a five-year period of time, not so much a two-year period of time. We're looking at being able to enhance connection with the community, but also look at additional commercial hire opportunities by diversifying the product experience that we currently offer at RPAC. We see the role as fitting very closely and neatly into the strategic plan that we've just adopted as council and the creative arts space. And it is also, I probably need to advise councillors, it is an item in the operational plan for twenty-four, twenty-five. I hope that assists with your question.
Do you have a further question councillor? Sorry?
I had three questions.
Okay, could you ask them all, please, and then we'll get them all answered at the one time?
Okay, so my second question is concerning the GIS mapping officer. My understanding is with the city plan coming forward, a GIS officer will be very much needed in that regard, whereas this GIS officer would be more with the environmental. Would they be able to deal with climate change conditions as well as locating? Because our Redlands ecosystem is our greatest asset and it is valued as in two thousand and ten.
Councillor?
I'm just saying, it was two point eight, it was two point eight billion dollars. So my question is, will this GIS officer...
Councillor, I am the Chair and I will give you a warning. Thank you.
Will this GI... Sorry, I thought you'd stopped.
The question as to whether the technical officer can work in both areas has already been answered.
No, I wasn't asking, I was asking would this officer, was it to be designated more solely towards the bushfire and the location of our more important environmental areas? Being our greatest asset, we should be caring for it to that degree.
Again councillor, you are arguing your point, you are not asking a question.
All right, that's your ruling, thank you. And my third question is, to do with the public art, was the public art going to be used as more of a place-making device to drive urban regeneration and boost local economic development in a area such as Melbourne users bringing in sixty-two million dollars a year through tourism to their city?
Thank you. Officer Rusan, you're answering that, thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor and thank you councillor Boglari for the question. Certainly, public art is something that does bring a sense of place and space to a community, it does provide identity and character. And it is a common strategy that councils across the country use to create that sense of place and excitement and pointed difference within a community space. Officers have presented this to council over, I suppose, a number of years. We do have, the very first public art policy was formed in about two thousand and three for council. And we have since that time had years where we haven't budgeted for public art and years where we have. It's our role as council officers to present to council opportunities for enhancing the city and that public art is one of those opportunities that we think would be a value add and an attractor to the community. I hope that assists your question.
So just to clarify further on that matter, the two hundred thousand dollars allocated in this budget, which is being proposed to be removed, refers to the refurbishment or creation of four murals, is that correct?
Deputy Mayor, what I would say to you is that we've heard from councillors that there is interest in public art and that you would like us to not only come back and revisit the policy position, but also what those projects may be moving forward for the financial year. Officers have presented council with some options that had been scoped up previously that could be ready to go if that's what you would so desire. But if you wanted to evolve that, then we could do that as well. So the public art, we did have budget last year and there were some projects that were delivered and there was some scoping for future works that could be considered. But that amount of money for the public art can be at council's discretion in terms of how and where that is spent. I hope that assists you Deputy Mayor.
So it was a fairly direct question, two hundred thousand dollars to repaint three murals and fifty thousand dollars to expand one of those murals, is that not correct?
I couldn't actually answer that question directly. Oh, but it looks like Brad can, so if you're comfortable Deputy Mayor?
So directly, that's no. The two hundred thousand dollars, well, two things, I'll take one step back. In our presentation, we proposed that public art could be on a two-year cycle and we could probably do it better if year one, we scoped, investigated, consulted, priced, in order to make a budget bid for the second year that would be quite specific. So here's the project, it's in point A, point B, and here's the amount of money that we propose would do that. So with that in mind, this year is kind of in transition. There's two projects that are ready, shovel-ready in a public art kind of way. So yes, incorrect to that question. I haven't got the exact figures, but in a nutshell, the two hundred thousand dollars would pay for our policy. We need a better policy, councillor Boglari's points about place-making and the value, we need to fix the policy, get consultants to help us with that. There's a little bit of cream left with a significant piece at Wellington Point, so that's the only repair, it's a recreation, that's not in the maintenance budget. And then the other amounts were for proposed larger scale works, plus a little bit of money to actually scope and talk to artists, employ artists to help envisage that. Does that answer the question?
Good enough, thank you. Is that a question councillor Rendell?
I'd move that the motion be put.
We have a procedural motion councillors, this is a procedural motion to have the matter of the amendment put to a vote. So I don't need a second up for that. Now, this is not voting on the amendment, this is voting on whether you want to put the amendment with no further discussion. Do you understand? I'm getting quizzical looks. Yes, councillor, once we have accepted or rejected the amendment, then we will return to further debate on the motion in front of us. So you will have further opportunity to speak on the matter, but it will depend on the vote as to whether we accept the amendment or not. What's your question councillor?
So for clarification, this vote now is to adopt and endorse the amended motion, becoming, no?
Becoming the motion, yes.
Becoming the motion.
Yes, okay, so this vote, no, sorry, it's not, no.
That's why I just wanted to clarify.
No, so this is a vote as to whether you want to bring to, no.
You've just got to accept the amendment. You haven't got a live motion yet.
No.
You've got to accept, you've got to accept the amendment.
But don't we have to vote on the put motion first?
Yes.
Right, so we vote on the put motion and then we vote on the amendment. So the first vote I will ask you for councillors is whether you want to close discussion on the amendment and move to a vote. Is that clear? Right, those in favour of the put motion, can I have a show of hands? Okay, hold on a moment please. Councillor Hughes, what's, what? Yeah, I don't know that councillor, you do understand that you'll have further opportunity to debate the matter. This is not putting the motion, this is simply asking, do you want to put the motion? No. This is a put, this is, okay. Councillor Rendells has asked to put the motion, which means first of all, I'm asking you all to vote on whether you are happy to finish debating the amendment. So what will happen is I will ask you about the put motion, which is whether you are happy to finish debating the amendment. If you are happy, if that is supported, then we will vote on whether we accept the amendment to become the motion. So it's two votes, okay? So those in favour of the put motion, can I see a show of hands please? Those in favour are councillor Mitchell, councillor Rendells, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Cooley, councillor Talty. Those against are councillor Boglari, councillor Gole, councillor Hughes and councillor Bishop. Therefore, that is carried. We will now vote on the amendment becoming the motion. So you are voting on whether we move to accept the amendment as proposed by councillor Mackenzie. So those in favour of the amendment to the original motion, can I see a show of hands please? Those in favour are councillor Mitchell, councillor Rendells, councillor, sorry, Mackenzie, councillor Cooley, councillor Talty. Those against are councillor Boglari, councillor Gole, councillor Hughes and councillor Bishop. Therefore, that is carried. The amended proposed motion is now the motion. So councillors, you can now speak and I will, we've already had councillor, we've already had debate for, so I'm looking for a speaker against, I believe.
Clarification, just clarification.
Pardon?
You went into for and against before this became the motion.
Yes, I did. So now it's a live motion. Councillor, what's your point of clarification please?
Now that it's a live motion, do we commence with for and against?
Yes.
So previous speakers who've spoken for or against, that's annulled and it's now reset. Thank you, that's all I wanted to clarify, thank you.
Right, councillor Mackenzie has spoken for this motion and she can speak further to it if she wants to.
Oh, no, just continue, I think.
Okay, so as I asked, is there a speaker against? You're against the motion?
I'm against the motion.
Okay councillor, go.
Okay, I'd actually like to see that these actual additional operational requests are brought forward. I would also like to have an understanding from the officers on the actual security guard and vehicle one which was taken out previously.
Councillor, that is not in this motion?
No, I was just asking, I just wanted to clarify.
That was not moved forward at the budget meeting in June?
No, but I could do an amendment to this motion if I felt strongly enough that it should still be in there if I, based on that information, if I receive it.
I don't know that you could because it's not in this, but I will just ask one of the officers to confirm that the reason the security guard position is not in here is because it did not move forward at budget.
Point of order if I may, just to-
Hold on officers please, we have a point of order. Please make it a real point of order councillor.
I'm just, I'd just like to flag that I'm concerned that you may have been debating the councillor through the chair. I just wanted to clarify whether that's what you were doing.
No, it was not, thank you officer.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, if I could. We have done a lot of work with our staff and also with some cameras in that area and so the risk assessment said that we could manage it without pulling on a full-time person.
Thank you, I just wanted that clarity that the risk has been reduced to staff because I was concerned because it was about staff safety. Yep, okay, thank you, all right, I won't need an amendment. With item number one, the RPAQ producer, as I said before, RPAQ is the largest attractor we've got to Cleveland. And for over a decade, many councillors have sat in here and said that we need to get Cleveland going, we need to get it more alive. And that is exactly what RPAQ does. Try getting a meal at one of the local restaurants when you go to a show. Unless I went at five o'clock, I wasn't going to get in with my friends recently. I believe having this new producer would actually increase the amount of shows we had there, it would give a greater diversity.
Councillor, I'm just going to pause you for a moment. I'm going to ask governance to help me with a matter here. We have an amended motion before us and the motion, we've already debated the amendment and that was a debate about what positions stay in and what positions are not in. Further debating those positions that were removed, I believe is debating the previous matter, not the matter before us. So as a matter of standing orders, I'd like to understand please where we would stand on debate, further debate for positions that are out.
Through you Deputy Mayor, I think the councillors just debate, just arguing against what is now the live motion. So it's just an against argument. And the reasons why is because the councillor would like to see that position in, but I think it's just an argument against.
Okay, thank you, thank you councillor, continue.
And I think it would be a shame not to let RPAQ reach the full potential, not only for the economic development of our CBD, but also for the support it would give many more locals in our art community, which we all know is extremely passionate. I'm also speaking against the motion because I understand the GIS mapping is really vital to going forward. Otherwise, our officers wouldn't have requested it. In a upcoming agenda item, I think it was number 15.1 on the environmental programmes related to the EPBC Act, it actually talks in there on page 252, the need for special modelling and spatial awareness to support the in-depth research that is needed to actually ensure all our future environmental decisions are based on science fact. This can include, as we previously mentioned, not only accommodating the stresses of future developments, but also the impacts of climate change. And as I have repeatedly said, there is no other asset or business in Redlands with the value of our environment. And the impacts on it greatly affect every one of us, from economic, social and right down to our lifestyles, which we all understood during Covid, the value of our environment. So our primary task is to support the development and arrange of this officer was to support the development and arrange of plans and strategies that are environmentally science-based. And that is what we continually ask for, is our decisions to be based on science. Public art to me is a low-picking fruit that we can do quite easily across our city. And I have always supported public art across this city, no matter what area it is in, because it is such a motivator for economic objectives, social impacts and creative placemaking. It energises and revitalises urban neighbourhoods and that's straight off the internet. And if you want to look at our public art policy, it also talks about the value-led organisations encapsulating what we care about, influence how we operate and support our mission, supporting the development of public art of significance and meaning to the local environment and community, encouraging collaborative arrangements between artists and design professionals in creation and commissioning of public arts. It is in our corporate plan and it is also in our policy. When you look at other areas, and I just had to Google benefits of public art, Melbourne was the one that blew me away though. As I previously mentioned, $62 million a year, they contribute to tourism. And one lane down there alone attracts 80,000 people. So if we continue to put public art across our city, in our villages and in other areas, on our ferry terminals, down the southern Moreton Bay Islands, it attracts people solely for that. It is such a fantastic destination and a placemaking device. I won't support this amended motion because I believe that those three projects which are being taken out are vital. They're all not only to do with the environment, they're to do with building our communities stronger plus economic development.
Looking for a speaker for? Speaker for the motion? Are more speakers for? Okay, do you have a question councillor?
Again, I'll try to be succinct. Through you, Madam Chair, to, who will the GIS person fall under, please? Oh, excellent. Graham, will the GIS mapping officer be able to assist in the tracking of the imported red fire ant? Please, we have that benefit of actually being able to utilise that for that methodology as well.
Thank you councillor, so the, so it's a transitional period for fire ants? It's probably the best way to describe it. So at the moment, the state is providing a lot of support in that GIS space. That support is with council at this point to 2026. At that point, that's when, it's unknown I guess, as to how much support we will need to provide ourselves to that mapping. But that's one component of a much bigger programme that officer would be involved with.
So is that a yes, but possibly after 2026? Or is that a, we're still not prepared yet for fire ants?
No councillor, you're getting right off topic. Your question's been answered. Okay, we've got GIS support for fire ants from the state government until 2026.
Yep.
And out of the two GIS requests, we've got one proposed to move forward. And there's two more budgets between now and 2026 where another can be added later if required.
Yes, there's lots to talk about with fire ants, but I won't touch it here. The comms officer, who was the communications officer? Through you Madam Chair, sorry Graham, this will lead to another area. Who was the comms officer for the last city plan review? Did we actually have a dedicated principal communications officer? Because I'm, don't we have an abundance of ex-journos and whatever sitting in our comms team waiting to do communications on anything we do?
Oh, sorry, I thought I'd turned it on and I turned it off. I believe David's here to answer the need for the communications officer in planning and development of a city plan.
Thank you Deputy Chair.
Not, yeah, it's difficult, please.
Thank you Deputy Chair, through you to councillor Gole and councillors. We didn't have a dedicated officer within city planning and assessment for the last city plan review. What we do know is that city plan is a significant piece of work. It has significant community interests. It's a plan that we only develop once every 10 years. We also know that the Redlands community is one of the most engaged, vocal communities when it comes to planning matters. We've seen that even today in chambers. So we think there's a real need for a dedicated communications officer embedded within the planning group to be across all planning matters to assist in developing that city plan. But it's not just city plan. We, again, as we've seen in chambers today, there is significant community interest in planning matters. We know the community are asking for more information on planning and development across the city. We've got a great team of planners, engineers, environmental officers and the like. But their primary purpose is in technical expertise, it's not in communications. So we think there's a real need to bridge that sort of gap between our communications team and our planning group and have that dedicated communications officer. And there certainly will be sufficient work for that role.
Thank you, look, I think I'll leave it there.
Thank you councillor.
Madam Chair, I guess for me, I didn't support the budget. And I won't re-prosecute why. I guess for me, it's hard to sort of justify the expenditure without seeing the real nuts and bolts of how we got to this point. What is that operational breakdown? Who was, how did it come to be that we're at this point asking for extra dollars and extra budgets?
Councillor, we are in formal session. We've concluded our for and against debate and we've moved to questions. So does that complete your question?
Yes.
Okay, you have a further question? And a question from councillor Hughes, okay. Councillor Bishop?
I'd like to ask officers and probably head of environment, Officer Simpson through the chair, in regard to our EPBC matters of significance, is there a risk that by not having a GIS officer that we may not fully understand the scope and layout and the density, that where our, how we manage all of that? I'm just wondering, that officer surely has a role and I'd just like to understand how imperative that is. We're in a very new environment with EPBC. Do you see that role as critical? Because from what I understand, that's part of what this massive new requirement that's been burdened upon us is needing to try and navigate. And we make our decisions based on data. Is it true that the data that would come from that will help us with EPBC matters?
Councillor, I believe that there's another new position being created to deal with that, but I'll let the officer speak to it.
So, yes, correct. So what we've got is a, I guess, an evolving, more complex area when it comes to the environment. So EPBC is just one example of that, where understanding, I guess, what we have in the city, from whether it's habitat, whether it's wildlife, where it is, how it's functioning, all those things are really important. So part of the purpose of a GIS role would be to support our understanding of what we have and then how that then flows through to any evaluations and assessments we may need to make on some of our projects.
In response to that, I've got another question, but I think just, I think it's very important that we acknowledge the naturally wonderful title which is-
Councillor, just asking question.
Redland City Council's brand. My next question is, actually, it's a philosophical question for this council. What is this council? Who is our community? Where are we now? Where are we going?
Councillor, that's a rhetorical question. And you are now debating the matter and we have moved on.
Is it not true that an arts officer through RPAQ will help us to navigate that for our future?
Point of order, could you stop speaking councillor? Yes?
I'd like to, it's in 8.1.1, the code of conduct for councillors. There's been councillor Bishop at the moment who's not showing respect to this chamber or the standing orders. He's not meeting his responsibilities under the act in doing that. He's constantly interrupting and that's bringing our reputation into disrepute. So I think if it continues, there could be an unsuitable meeting conduct process if he continues.
Thank you councillor.
Can I just seek point of clarification?
Councillor, no, we're not going to debate that. I will rule that you, if you have a genuine question, please ask it. No rhetorical questions.
I'm just concerned that-
No councillor, I have said, please continue with your question. A genuine question, do you have a genuine question for an officer?
Yes, how is this council going to deliver our recently adopted Creative Arts Service strategic plan without that role?
Thank you.
Is there a risk that we may fail in our intent?
Councillor, I'm speaking. I'm not allowing that question because it is not a question related directly to this. It is related to a different policy.
It's related directly to this in relation to the officer of RPAQ, which is a creative producer. And that role has been identified in work that we have adopted-
that we have adopted for our Creative Arts Service Strategic Plan twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine. There's an assumption there that that will be done and the stretch requirements that are being requested that we've adopted. Is, is, is there a risk that those aspirational goals may not be able to be achieved if that role's not integrated?
I think that is too broad a question councillor.
It's a specific question relating to the role of a man.
I haven't finished speaking. I will ask Officer Rusan to make a comment and that will close the matter, please. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor and thank you councillors for the conversation. The question councillor Bishop. Officers will work within the budget and the scope that council provides and will report back if we're not able to deliver on those outcomes. And I'm sure you'll recall the conversation. Thank you councillors.
Thank you. Councillor Hughes, did you have a question?
We've got the three line items that we are really honed in and focused on. I'm just wondering, are we voting on block for, for all of them or are we able to break down?
Councillor, you have a motion before you. When we vote, we will be voting on that motion. Thank you.
Okeydoke. Thank you.
Okay. I will take that as a procedural motion if you like councillor Rendell's. I would like an opportunity to speak.
Of course.
If you would withdraw that motion to-
I'll withdraw it pending discussion from the chair.
Councillors, before I move back to councillor Mackenzie to sum up on the matter, I'd just like to have a moment to speak to the overall motion. It's unfortunate that the way the debate played out, we centred on three additional operating requests among a sea of really good news stories in this report. This is a good report. We've got lots of exciting stuff happening in here. I did have a section noted. We have an overall budget which was a deficit budget. And as well as all of the other important things that have been noted, it is our responsibility to work within our means and to try to bring our budget before June next year back from deficit. We are aware that the community is hurting in the financial times and we are doing our best to provide a, a high level of service without impacting on our staff. And there are a number of, of very important measures in this document which speak to the high level of service and the high level of infrastructure that's being delivered by this council. So it would have been nice, I would have thought, if some of those matters could have taken the, the brunt of your consideration and concern. Things like the current confirmation of the urban congestion fund for the Wellington Panorama Street upgrade is being recognised by Queensland Reconstruction Authority grant for the Kararigara Island Esplanade foreshore coastal protection. A further seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars confirmed in operational grants are also being recognised for such programmes as illegal dumping partnership programme, locally-led economic recovery and the QRA contribution towards citywide overland flow mapping. These are all important things and unfortunately, they haven't really been given the recognition through this debate that I think they probably deserved. So I just wanted to point out that it's worthwhile anyone who's interested in this matter, reading the whole report and the attachments, rather than focusing on these budget recovery measures. So with that, I'll put back to councillor Mackenzie to close the item off.
Thank you and thank you for highlighting the other parts of the budget review that have been overlooked. I'll just sum up probably just on the debate in that I've asked over a month ago, possibly six weeks, when we did the budget for the operating position of ARPA, which has still not been forthcoming from officers. Without this, in my opinion, it would not be fiscally responsible to employ another staff member that's not going to pay for itself for at least five years. We have approved one GIS officer. And as we have heard from Officer Simpson, that-
Point of order.
It will-
Pardon me councillor, what is your point of order councillor?
I believe the councillor just suggested that a role that is proposed, the ARPA producer, suggested that the officer suggested it would not pay for itself over five years. I don't believe that that's what the officer suggested.
Councillor, that is not a point of order overruled. Continue councillor Mackenzie, please.
It is what the officer said. As we've heard, that we will probably need another environment GIS officer by twenty twenty-six. So we can defer that. And in my opinion, the public art policy needs reviewing before budget is allocated to go out and do public art. And I do look forward to seeing that policy. I have personally spoken with Brad on what it is that I love about public art, the types of public art that I like. And I am supportive of it, certainly just not the ones that were proposed. And I would like to see the policy reviewed before we go and expend budget on it. Thank you.
Thank you councillors. With that, I put the motion. Those in favour? Those in favour are councillor Mitchell, councillor Rendell's, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Cooley, councillor Talty. Those against are councillor Boglari, councillor Gole, councillor Hughes, councillor Bishop. With that, that's carried, thank you. Moving on to thirteen point three councillors, operational quarterly plan. Can I have a mover and a seconder please? Moved councillor Mitchell, seconded councillor Cooley. Would you like to speak to it councillor Mitchell?
Yes, thank you Madam Chair. This is the operational plan twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. It's the year-end summary and the performance for, for the fourth quarter. I mean, as we noticed in, in the previous item, the carrier of the budget, the news is overwhelmingly positive. This is the operational arm of council. And there have been, and this aligns of course with how we deliver on our corporate plan, a future Redlands to twenty twenty-six and beyond. It reflects, it's good to always remind us of, so this is seven, the seven goals or themes of the corporate plan. No less than seventy activities, thirty catalyst projects and thirty-seven key initiatives. So there's a lot of work that's going on. I'd like to, so you could, you can dig deep within this document and find something for everyone that you're going to like. And there will be enormous number of things that you're surprised are in there and usually surprised in the positive. I'd like to highlight just a couple of key catalyst projects that were finalised in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. The Redlands Health and Wellness Precinct, a lot of work being done through there. There's been a lot of work partnering with industry leaders to, to investigate alternative energy sources, looking to help our carbon footprint be reduced across our community. And perhaps one of my great favourites, the advocating for improved digital infrastructure. The fibre optic network has been enhanced and that will be greatly complemented of course by our own internal digital transformation work. It's not all good news, but it's all news. And some of the, some of the highlights or lowlights, if we like, in stronger communities might be the challenges that we are finding with EPBC in progressing Heinemann Road Sports Precinct and also some of the Berkdale Parkland. Their, their delays, their challenges, we, we will work through, we will push through. But it's disappointing to see that those significant projects are, are being held up in the way that these matters are being assessed. And just to highlight one other area within thriving economy section of, of the operational plan. Knowing some of the great work that's been done, looking across the Kapalabar precinct, through the great work of Rick and council officers internally here. The overseas trade delegation to India. The, the outcomes of that, the sky's the limit. But it's, it's really fantastic to see that, those outreaches going on. Cleveland revitalisation work continues. There's a lot of things going on, not only for Cleveland, the retail toolkit that came out recently for all the retailers across our city. But that was well attended with the Cleveland retailers. The industry engagement workshops that came from that and there's a lot more to come. So there's an awful lot within this document. Council overwhelmingly are ticking the, ticking the boxes and, and hitting the mark. And by going through these documents, you may be then prompted to dive a bit deeper and reach out to council for some more detail. That's always very welcome or find something that you might want to get involved with. But like all the things we do here, we can get caught up in the weeds sometimes. But gee, it's great to see these documents that show how overwhelmingly positive and effective this council is being every day in delivering livability for our community.
Thank you councillor. Do I have a speaker against? No, not at this stage. Are you going to ask a pretend question because you want to make a comment?
No, I'll, I'll speak against if, if that's the process of your chairing, is that there's no opportunity for comments and you're only going to take that. Can I take the right to speak against the motion?
I will allow comments councillor, which would you prefer? Are you a speaker against?
I'm just clarifying the chairing.
Point of order madam there. Councillor is again interrupting chair, seven six one one. The seat speaker might support what has been raised, but he's also interrupting the chair. But again, point back to the code of conduct. He's bringing, yeah, and quite rightly, you should be a little contrite, I believe councillor, but that's up to the chair. I don't believe you are treating this chamber with respect. And again, I ask through the chair, if the council does continue this behaviour disrespectful to you in this chamber, then perhaps it is time to look at the unsuitable meeting process because it is getting a little beyond the pale for this councillor. And I'm not sure what my colleagues think of this, but you are the chair. I defer to your ruling.
Councillor Bishop? Councillor Bishop?
Was that a point of order?
Yes, that was a point of order.
I'd like to call a point of order on the point.
Eight point one point one.
You can't call a point of order on a point of order councillor. Councillor?
If the chair is collateral-
Councillor, I am going to give you a warning on that point of order. And now I'm going to ask for speakers against. And I will tell you now, I will allow you to have comment if you prefer instead of being a speaker against.
Thank you, I would, I would like to do that.
Just let me ask for questions first if it's a comment though. Okay?
And I do have a question.
You have a question? Okay. Councillors, are there any speakers against? No. Councillor Bishop, what is your question?
My question relates to page seventeen of seventy-six, which is sixty-seven in the agenda attachment of the operational plan. It relates to item catalyst project two point two, Berkdale Community Precinct, Willards Farm to Galper Creek corridor. Point C, which is two point two point one. Point C, which is plan events to showcase the site to the Redlands Coast community. And under quarter four, if we're on that page. I'm looking at, it's two point two.
Councillor, perhaps ask your question and worry about finding where it is in the report after we know what you want to know.
Thank you. The question is, it suggests, and I did raise this through the chair with Officer Isles just earlier. It suggests that event planning has been delayed until construction is completed. Just seeking clarification if the event planning has been delayed until construction of the overall site? Just want to understand which component of construction is delaying events or gathering or community communing on that site.
Do you have any clarification you can make on that Chris?
Thank you Deputy Mayor and through you to the councillor. So construction is still carrying on site in relation to both Willards Farm. The overall construction of the Berkdale Parkland itself, as councillor Mitchell has alluded to, has been delayed as a combination of EPBC referrals, but also I guess a layering of approvals that is holding us up. That includes fundamentally the progression of the local government infrastructure designation of the LGID, which actually would give us the head of power to undo operational works on the site. So until that LGID is adopted, we can't provide access to the site in a safe manner. Until we can provide safe access to the site, we then can't reasonably have large numbers of community members on site. We can't progress the LGID or don't wish to progress the LGID perhaps more accurately until we have the final investment decision for the Whitewater and Resilience Centre. So our objective of course on behalf of officers is to have the community to access the site as soon as we can, both whether it's in its formal context as a park as we would know it or in a controlled manner such as an event. And that's still our objective, but we haven't and probably won't be able to do that until we can provide safe access to the site. So that has certainly been held up. Now recognising that this is a point in time operational plan to wrap up. We are progressing, as you know, the completion of the Willards Farm restoration. And we certainly hope to have community be able to access that portion of the larger Berkdale site as soon as is possible. But that is unlikely to occur until early, perhaps the first quarter of next year in a calendar sense.
Supplementary.
Thank you. Yes, certainly councillor Gole.
Given, given the time delay and through the chair again, thank you. Given the time delay and the desire from the community to consider future activation of the site, we do have the, the, the social activation process as a parallel journey. Is, what pathways do we have to allow the community to consider some of the things that they might want to see on site going forward? I appreciate that this is probably not the forum for fuller analysis of that.
Councillor, I'm not sure.
But just so that the community can get ready to commune in a way that they wish to on the site that means so much to them. Just wondering, is there a way that we can allow the community to consider the sorts of things that they would like to do around those?
This is an operational point in progress. I don't know that that's a really relevant question, although Lee officer may comment.
Happy for it to, to go offline.
Yeah, well, thank you councillor. I, I'm perhaps not quite sure I a hundred percent understand the question. All that's in the public realm at the moment is the master plan. There's probably nothing additional that we could offer to the community that would allow them to envisage how they might use the site beyond what's in the public realm until we can provide safe access to it.
It's around the social activation.
Thank you. Councillor said he's happy to take it offline, so we'll, we'll leave that there. Do we have any further questions councillor Rendell?
I've got seven questions about interpretation of some of the data.
I guess we'll just proceed as best we can and is it, is it something that you can take offline or something that needs, you, you need to have clarified before voting on this item today?
No, it's something that I can-
I'm happy to take offline with Chris.
Okay. Is there a shorter version that you would like in the public realm now?
That, it's, it's, the, the three, the three big areas. You know, number, number one is on page seven of the operational plan highlight report or it's page thirty-one in, in your things here, which is about the legacy working group. It's identified as a hundred percent complete for quarter four. But my understanding, it hasn't yet been reconvened. So I was just querying how something could be a hundred percent when it hasn't been reconvened. The other issue was in regards to some of your business engagement. And further on the report, you talk about progress against business engagement. My question is, what was the scope of the engagement with the businesses on the southern Moreton Bay Islands? And the third, the third area is in, in relation to the Wynham Creek development. The level of status on that vis-à-vis that we still haven't received a, a proposal from, from the tenderer or the proposed provider.
Okay. I don't know if perhaps the CEO might just speak to the, the nature of this report and the further information that will come with each quarterly report.
Yeah, thanks Deputy Mayor. But I'd encourage you to perhaps take those questions. We try to release this early so we can have some of those specific questions taken offline. We're happy to talk to you about those seven areas, but those three that you've just highlighted now. It's, it is just a report that tries to give an indication as to our achievement throughout the year. The legacy working group, I think Chris has already talked to you about, will be re-established at some stage. I think it was set up for two years and the two years is now concluded. So that's how you get to the hundred percent, but it'll be- So that's how you get to the hundred percent, but it'll be reestablished. And the other matters, I'd suggest we just take, take offline and work you through the report.
Thank you. Question, councillor Boglari?
Oh, just a question, but I'm happy for it to come back to me. On page sixty-six of seventy-six, it talks about continuing advocacy for our key events, which I support throughout our city for economic development, but it talks about upgrades to event venues. I thought our main event venue will eventually be the Burke Dale Land, so if you could just tell me what other event venue places in our open spaces that we're considering, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Chris.
Sorry councillor, I was just trying to catch up. Could you just give me that page reference again?
Sixty-six of seventy-six, utilisation of open spaces.
So you mean other than Bayview, the showgrounds, eastern apartment for bike races, football fields?
It just seemed to me like there were some new ones coming on board, and I was just wondering what areas we were considering, just the way it's written there, for upgrades and infrastructure and that, I was wondering what we're considering.
Okay, I'll ask the officer to tell you what he can, but otherwise perhaps to take it offline.
That's what I said, happy for it to be taken offline.
We'll do that, thank you councillor.
With that, I did say I would indulge councillor Bishop with a comment. Councillor Bishop.
Yeah, thank you. My comment relates to corporate plan, item six point seven, which is page sixty-one or seventy-six, of seventy-six, or page one hundred and eleven in the agenda. It relates to the proposed, it talks about the Redlands Coast Integrated Aquatic Centre, an Olympic standard canoe kayak slalom facility. One of my concerns with the Burke Dale precinct is that it's always, has always been that this highly constrained culturally, environmentally, historically sensitive piece of land purchased for community purposes would potentially have a shift away from the naturally wonderful values, and, and that matters moving forward with the heavy industry, industry construction of the whitewater rafting is, can be a concern for the community. There are still lots of questions to be asked about the cost for delivery, stages, the sequencing priority and the capacity to deliver various elements within the overall master plan, and also this, the proposed aquatic, integrated aquatic centre, I believe that the fifty metre pool is no longer part of the aquatic centre, so that terminology may need to change in our, in our corporate plan. And when I look at the item, it suggests that we're committed to delivering that.
Councillor, this is only a quarterly report.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And all of those big ticket items.
I would like to make sure, when we come to the LGID, which is proposed to finalise the LGID, that there are still matters with regards to the EPBC, but also matters of state and environmental, national, state and local environmental significance, and also the, the, the earth moving in the area is still a concern to the community, so just flagging those things as my comment. Thank you.
As I indulge councillor Bishop, is there any further comment? Now, with that, I'll put to councillor Mitchell to wrap up, please.
Council does an amazing job in delivering an incredible amount of operational matters to the benefit of our community. The end.
That's it? You're finished? Thank you. Okay, without I put the motion, those in favour. That is approved unanimously with the two councillors on leave out of the room. Thank you. Now, we move to thirteen point four, standing orders. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Moved councillor Mackenzie, seconded councillor Coley. You want to speak to it councillor Mackenzie?
Only very briefly, because we have all seen this and it was held over from a previous meeting. We've streamlined our standing orders, made some adjustments in line with legislation changes. Thank you councillor officers for assisting councillors in getting notices of motions in that allow us time to formulate them, but the organisation time to make sure that their word is correctly before they're in the agenda. And really looking forward to that change in petitions, in that the words are going to be limited and that we will no longer be accepting petitions that really don't relate to our level of government. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Do I have a speaker against? You're a speaker against councillor Gole.
Yeah, thanks honour of the chair. I'm speaking against it primarily because I did ask for another heading or aspect to be added into this particular programme, and that was the presentation of evidence through photographs, et cetera. The reason I asked that is because when councillors do a presentation, it actually becomes very transparent for the community and the other councillor colleagues around the room to physically see what we are talking about. And if I recall back to when, it was probably one of my very first rejections against or refusals against a property development, I was able to bring it up on screen and show the impacts to the corridors so that the public could see and councillors could see. And then we ultimately were able to form an opinion and an outcome where we refused that particular development application. We tend to blurb out a lot of words, we tend to present based on reports, et cetera, but I think there's nothing tangible. So what's the evidence? How are we actually being allowed to present our evidence and any type of subsequent documents to provide to the public and to us to make that formed decision? So I'd actually like to see a component in the standing orders that is representative of councillors and how they present evidence in order to support what they're speaking to or against, please.
Okay, councillor, I'm not quite sure what you're driving at there, but I believe we did have those photographs and they were presented, and I do recall them, and there's nothing stopping a councillor.
No, it actually is. It's actually, I actually have tried to present something again under Mayor Williams, and I was told that I had to seek permission from the mayoral position to actually present photographic evidence to support what I was trying to put across, that it's not within standing orders, and that there is no provision for us to present some type of a presentation using photographs or evidence to support what we're actually putting across.
I think there is scope there, but we'll leave that, if we can, or wait, it's on that specific point. Okay, thank you councillor Mackenzie.
Just a quick question on what councillor Gole is saying. Seven point six point one three, cannot photographs be tabled under that?
Correct, that's the section I was just looking at. Obviously with tabling documents, you did be careful of confidentiality, privacy, privilege.
So.
But seven point six point thirteen allows for tabling of documents.
The councillor can present photos when he's moving a motion?
Subject to the limitation, sorry, through you chair, subject to the limitations I just said.
There you go. Okay, so.
So, thank you, but that wasn't my understanding. I was told flat out I had to seek permission from the mayor to put photographs up on the big screen in order to present support what I was presenting.
Well, that would be changing the meeting, so yes, but if you are arguing something and you have something that you wish to request to be included in the minutes, there's, there's scope for that. But anyway, we'll move on, thank you. Do we have a speaker for the motion? It's a simple matter, councillor, you really need comment on this.
Thanks to the officers for all the work they've done.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
It's done, thank you to the officers for all the work you've done on this and indulging councillors, it's important, this is a very important piece of information for us all.
Thank you. Do you need to wrap up councillor Mackenzie?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Without I put the motion, those in favour. The motion is carried, you are for, yeah, sorry, those four, councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Rendells, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Coley, councillor Bishop, councillor Talty. Those against, councillor Gole, noting we have two councillors on leave today, thank Moving on now to item thirteen point five, which is the expenses reimbursement provision policy. Do I have a mover and seconder for that? Councillor Mackenzie?
Thank you, I'd like to move option two, that council resolves to request the CEO to undertake a further review of the vehicle options for councillors under the expenses reimbursement and provision of facilities for councillor's policy.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder for that motion? Seconded councillor Hughes, do you want to speak further on it councillor?
Only briefly, that we have received the legal advice that officers stand by and completely respect, with understanding though that from the information that they've provided, there's a, we could potentially change a portion of the expenses reimbursement and provision of facilities for councillor's policy in the way that councillors who have their private vehicle do their logbook requirements. So councillor officers are aware of that, legal and governments are aware, so my understanding is that they are going to review that and potentially bring the policy back to us at the September meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a speaker against? You're a speaker against councillor?
Madam Chair, I'm actually seeking your indulgence because I have, I would like to actually expand on a few things and not just focus on vehicles in relation to this report.
No, councillor, I'm going to stick to standing orders, so if you don't have a question, I'll move on to councillor Bishop's question. Just one second, I had someone talking about speaking against, was it? Right. Well, I was asking him if he wanted to and he doesn't actually.
All right, well, the reason I wasn't going to speak against, but I can, is because councillor Mackenzie had moved a different option, which totally focused on vehicle provisions. Councillors, I raised this with you all the other day when we got our breakdowns on reports that were going to go to the public, looking at various aspects of councillor expenses, and I hope I'm on the right track here. So the reason I'm going to speak against.
Councillor, if I can, just before you proceed, I think what you're speaking to, if it's what you sent an email about yesterday, is a, is, is a, is a policy position, it's not relevant to this particular matter?
So, I, I understand what you're saying, and I understand that there's a reporting mechanism, et cetera, et cetera. However, I come into these chambers as a brand new councillor, I'm actually inheriting what were the divisional expenses previous to another councillor, which then gets reported out to the public. Here I am, Joe Smith, brand new councillor, and suddenly I've got six thousand dollars worth of expenses and I've been here for five minutes, because the expenses are applied to the division, not to the councillor. It's not, no.
Okay, councillors.
Councillor Coley had three monitors assigned to him because councillor Beridge had had two previous to him and it was inherited to him. He then had five thousand dollars worth of expenses reported.
Okay, councillors.
It's not true, I got it in writing from governance.
Councillors, please, I'm just going to ask the CEO to comment on that. I don't think it's something you need to debate in this room right at this time on this motion, I think it's something that we need to discuss further as a, as an, and gain better understanding of the way that the Act requires things to be reported.
Yeah.
If I can, CEO.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's correct councillor Gole, I have had a look at the email that was sent back to you yesterday, and I don't think that's correct.
So I'm completely supportive of what you're saying councillor, I just don't think now is the time and the place. Did I have someone, sorry?
So I can be clear, I mean, equipment that is purchased for and provided to a councillor is charged to the councillor's expense account, not equipment that's been reallocated. So if equipment's been reallocated, it's not, doesn't form part of your expenses. So in that instance, I think there was some reallocation to some material that was purchased last year, and only the cost of a new piece of equipment was allocated to that councillor.
Does that answer for now councillor?
I'll, I'll leave it there for now, but I do want to broad, as I said, I understand the policy, understand the reporting process. My understanding is, is that there are things being allocated to councillors that whether we've requested them or not, could fall under the heading of an organisational system upgrade, because it's actually put to us, so for example, for me to have this computer as a tool, whether I ask for it or not, it's actually applied to my expenses.
Completely agree with you, but it's not relevant to this item.
All right.
Councillor Coley.
For clarification, the issue which councillor Gole is referring to was an administrative error, which has since been corrected.
Thank you. Yes, okay, is that a question councillor?
Yep.
Yep, councillor Bishop, it's, okay. Councillor Bishop, your question is?
Mine's a process question with regards to the alternate motion. Is the matter that is being proposed that might be looked at in a supplementary manner able to be done by accepting the initial motion, or do we need to?
No councillor.
So I just wanted to clarify that with officers. If that's the case, then thank you, that's my process question answered.
Okay, we have no further questions. Councillor Boglari is just returning. I think we're, we're getting closer, if we could, could you just come for this vote? Yep. So, we're, we're on the thirteen point five expense reimbursement policy, just to update you. All right councillors, with that, I put the motion, those in favour?
Option two.
No, you're not.
Councillors, through the chair.
Okay councillors, no more debate across the chambers, you are all across the matter. We have a motion before us, those in favour, please. Those in favour are councillor Mitchell, councillor Gole, councillor Rendells, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Coley, councillor Bishop, councillor Talty. Those against are councillor Boglari. That is carried with the two councillors on leave. Thank you. All right, we have got quite a bit to go, I suppose, as far as, councillors, I would prefer to just keep going, at least until we get to confidential without breaking for lunch, but I'll take your advice. You're happy to continue?
Happy.
Yes?
Happy.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just, I'll just.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, hopefully they're moving forward a little quicker now. Okay, councillors, thirteen point six, adoption of a human rights policy. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Move councillor Mitchell, seconded councillor Hughes. Do you need to speak to it councillor Mitchell?
No, I don't, it's very straightforward in the report, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speakers against? Okay, no speakers against, councillor Hughes, what's your question?
Thank you, deputy mayor, to the authorising officer Amanda Pathimmy, thank you, all representative, our legal counsel.
We'll work it out when you ask the question councillor.
Thank you. I'm just, on the first opening paragraph here, the purpose, and it talks about that this, a human rights policy is essential for any local government, da, da, da. Why, without reading it all, I'm just wondering why this is the first opportunity that we've seen a human rights policy before us, thanks.
Andrew will speak to that, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, thank you councillor. The human rights policy is not a mandatory requirement out of the Act, but certainly, if I can bring you to the next page, two, three, four, it is absolutely about building a human rights culture. So the benefit of having the policy before council, it gives it great corporate and community visibility of how important the twenty-three human rights are. It redlimises, if you like, or it creates this law, which is over sixty pages, from a state programme into the governance frame of a council. So straight away you have a lead assigned to the human rights policy and its implementation and training, you have review dates, which are a lot more stronger than the state provisions. It also has focus, you know, we've been focusing on human rights since the bill was immense, was started in two thousand and eighteen. In fact, the bill came from international human rights, which were in the nineteen forty-eight, nineteen fifties. So this is nothing new, but it is absolutely. which were in the 1948, 1950s. So this is nothing new, but it is absolutely about building a human rights culture for council and to give greater visibility of these rights for both the community councillors and our staff.
Mayor, but when you're, when you're saying that this is, this is nothing new, but what I'm saying is, it is new, it's a, it's a new policy, it's the first time we've seen it. So I think it's a culmination of all the works that have been done. It just, actually to my mind, it looks like we've been a little slow to the, to the.
Councillor.
But when you, I just want to seek clarity when you say that this is nothing new. This is something that we've been doing for a long time.
Well, correct. I mean, it's nothing new in the sense of the principles that we practise, as we know in each of the reports today and last month and the month before that, had a human rights provision. So it's nothing new in terms of the principles that we practise. But councillor, you're quite correct through the chair, it is a new policy and the policy is implemented for the reasons I just stated.
Thank you, okay.
Chair, I can, if I can through you, to councillor Hughes. So just over 12 months ago, we created the Ethics and Integrity Unit, and there's been a number of issues or a number of topics in that unit that have been developed over the last 12 months and this is one of those. So it's been a matter of developing the culture within the organisation, getting the education through the organisation with regard to human rights, with regard to information privacy, right to information etcetera, etcetera. So it's been an ongoing progress. And we've got to the point now where the team has got the confidence in the organisation that it has an understanding of human rights and to bring this policy to council now.
Fabulous outcome, thank you.
Thank you councillor. No further questions with that. Sorry, who moved the motion? Councillor, did you need to sum up? No. Right, with that, I'll put the motion, those in favour? That is carried unanimously with two councillors on leave. Thank you councillors. 13.7 is the commencement of a local law macing process in relation to animal management. This is, this is the very beginning of the process. Councillor Hughes is moving the motion. Do we have a seconder councillor Boglari? Would you like to speak to it councillor Hughes?
Would I what? However, I won't, because it is the start of a, a long process. This will go out to community and our officers and I just, at every opportunity commend our officers, this is just damn tough going out there. So well done to them, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a speaker against? Can I proceed to the vote? Thank you. Oh, would you like to sum up councillor Hughes? Thank you. You know I've got plenty to say on that, but I'll hold it also. Okay, those in favour? That's carried unanimously with two councillors on leave, thank you. Moving to 13.8, which I think is a slight, is this the one with the grammatic, yeah. So there's just a very slight, there was a, a number error in it. If you look there, it should have said 1.4 and it said 1.14. So that is all that yellow indicates. And again, this is the beginning of a, a process. So can I have a mover and a seconder for this? Moved councillor Bishop, seconded councillor Boglari. This is, would you like to speak to it councillor Bishop?
I need to say that this is a local law making process with regards to installation of advertising devices. It is again, the commencement of a local law making process that will take some time and involve some consultation, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a speaker against? No questions? Do you need to sum up councillor?
Not at all.
Thank you.
Francis waiting.
Put the vote, those in favour? That's carried unanimously with two councillors on leave, thank you. Moving on to 14, we have no reports from advocacy and major projects. Moving on to 15. Now, this is in response to a motion of council, a motion to councillor a year or so ago. Yes, councillor Colley, would you like to move a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move an amended motion please. Alternate, sorry, on the screen there.
Yep. And do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, seconded councillor Mackenzie, would you like to speak to it councillor Colley?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the officers who have put a lot of work into putting this report together. I think that it's important that we have visibility on what we are doing as an organisation to look after our environment, which is the most valuable asset of our city as councillor Boglari's mentioned already today. We're, we're blessed to have flora and fauna which is unique to our area, but is also lovingly maintained and cared for by council officers and the community. Given our community's great interest and passion for environmental conservation, I think it's also important that our commitment, our financial expenditure to, to look after the, the programmes in relation to koalas and threatened species management, as well as native vegetation rehabilitation and revegetation are there for everybody to see. So all that I'm asking here is that a further report be brought to council showing the expenditure as was the intent of the original notice of motion.
Thank you. Do I have a speaker against? No speakers against? Right, no, you're either speaker against or not. Okay, question councillor Boglari.
Thank you, through the chair to the officers. Given the workload that our staff have at present, can I ask what impost this would be on their, their time and would it take away from other projects?
Graham around? It's coming, okay. Just while we're waiting for the officer.
Because it is.
Councillor Bishop, is your question along same lines or is it something that could be combined to have one answer?
I've got a couple of questions and I do have a process.
Quite separate.
I do have a process question if I may, just to make a point of order.
Knowing what you want to ask, should I get councillor Boglari's question answered first or should I combine them? Okay, thank you. Officer Simpson, thank you.
Sorry, I might just need the question repeated. I was halfway through, but I think it was about the impost of resourcing.
Yeah, just the resourcing time and money on this, what time period would be required? I know on page 252 of the report, it talks about finalising such a report would require dedicated resourcing, including access to significant GIS support for up to six months. So I was just wondering what resources we're asking here.
Yeah, so the report I guess outlines what we estimate to be the, the, the time we would need and the resource we would need to compile the report to, to make it worthwhile in some regards. I guess it's probably what I'm saying. The, you know, the, the reason in some ways as to why this interim report arrived almost 12 months is just the, I guess the level of capability that we have in the unit to, to do all things that we need to do. So, so that's our projection as to what we would need to, to get that final report in place.
And the resourcing, because I noticed it asks for a GIS support for up to six months and we now won't have an environmental one. So I'm just asking for staff resourcing and stress loads.
Yeah, so the original notice of motion, we spoke about GIS support being critical to being able to, I guess, develop the, the data and the information that would sit within the report. That still would be a pressure on us being able to deliver on that. Yeah, we, we worked through with what resources we have.
As the mover of the original motion, I'll discuss that with you further. Question, oh sorry, councillor Bishop's first with his question.
Yeah, I do have a process question with regards to item, standing order, motion 7.5.2. Just clarification, it suggests here that the chairperson will call on any other councillor who wishes to speak against the motion for and against. Just wondering, if questions are allowed and if there's further debate, does that, you, you, you said before that you were halting the for and against process? I just want to check if we're able to get information and then continue for and against after questions?
Well, standing orders say for, against, questions. It's listed in that order.
So I'm just. So there are no more speaking for and against even if we ask questions?
Well, I, I guess the indulgence of the chair may allow that to happen, I would suspect.
You ruled that it wasn't, but I just wanted to check that, that's all.
Let's see how we, the debate progresses.
Okay, so I have a question relating to the item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do you have any actual questions on the matter?
That was a procedural question, thank you for the clarification. I do have a question through you to the officer with regards to the report on page 247, page two of the report mentions that council spent close to $36 million on strategic conservation of land acquisitions since 1993. Is it possible that we can get information back about the purchases and when they've happened? Is that possible as well?
Yes we can. So there is a, basically a table which sets out what purchases, when they were, how much they were, yes.
And my second question is, in relation to this, what is being asked of the alternative motion, there are many programmes through the chair that seem to be done in a collaborative process with other external stakeholders and agencies and so forth and universities. I imagine some of that's going to be very hard to get a dollar figure on. Is this likely to be onerous and burdensome? Because I, I note that the officer's recommendation is to close this out. I wonder if there's a separate process that we could go through to identify the questions that may still be outstanding from the original notice of motion. I wonder if there's a separate.
That's maybe not a question for the officer, that's maybe a question for councillors, I would suggest, and that is exactly what I would intend.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if this is the moment to do it with an alternate motion or whether we should bring something else back and go through a different.
I don't think that's something that the officer can answer, but I'll let him make a comment if he wants to.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the comment is that the option to kind of close it up was presented on the basis of even putting together a report which details everything we've done. Probably won't achieve the objective in regard to the EPBC recognition. So that's probably the premise for that option one. So option two, as I read it, is really about progressing with getting the data and information together. So it can tell the story, you know, you know, that's probably tempered by the fact that we know there are some gaps and we know there's some information which we won't be able to fully answer some of those, some of those questions. But that's, that's the effort that we'll need to put in, yes.
Thank you and thank you for the details in the report. Thank you.
So question councillor? Yes.
Thank you, and through you to legal council. My understanding is that we can pull out line by line items on how much we actually spend on our environment every single year. Is that correct?
We have coding that, depending on the accuracy of the coding, we can pull out spend dashboards, correct?
Okay. The other question I have for officers is, I'd like to understand where in the notice of motion is indicated that we need a GIS officer for six months in order to fulfil the requirements of the notice of motion. Because point one is just about our expenditure, so we don't need a GIS officer for that. Point two is what have been, what have our programmes been over the last 10 years and what are the programmes planned for the next five years? So we know what our programmes have been and what they're going to be, so why do we need programmes mapped?
So I think the, so the, the resource discussion in the report was based on if council wanted to proceed with full understanding of all the programmes, not just the, not just the cost of the programme, the GIS support is necessary. So the cost of the programme may be a simpler exercise, just extrapolating through those dashboards etcetera, but it probably won't give you the, or the context of actually what you're getting for that money.
Thank you.
I have a question then to the chair, who was the original writer of this motion. Was that the intent of the motion, that you wanted areas mapped? Because I didn't read it that we wanted mapping.
No, that was not the intent.
On, on what the programmes were and were they successful and what are our future programmes?
Okay, I'll very briefly answer that. No, that was not the intention. And given that it's been more than a year since the notice of motion and no one came to clarify or speak with me or discuss the matter further before this, what my grade nine history teacher often referred to as a flung through report, from me.
Point of order, if I may.
Excuse me councillor, I'm speaking. So, no.
I have called a point of order.
Yes, what's your point of order councillor?
I believe that what you've just asserted by the framing of this document as being something that is a professional officer report has been dismissed in a manner with your terminology that I would ask you to reflect upon.
Thank you. I will reflect upon it and I will discuss it further with the general manager and the CEO. Okay. Have we have any further questions? Yes councillor?
Just listening to the officer speaking then, they said it would be hard to get the information required to actually understand the programme without that mapping. So, you know, you can have a cost to anything, but unless you actually understand what that cost is covering and the benefits of that.
Councillor, if we've already spent the money, how is it that we don't understand what we spent it on?
Well, they, the officer just said then that they would need to do mapping. So maybe we're not up to date in this area because we haven't had sufficient staff or something, I don't know.
Then perhaps.
But it was just said that.
I'm not going to debate any further.
And you, we also, we would also need to know, in my benefit, you don't just put, you can get a value of costings to something, but unless you know the benefits that come with it, it can be misleading to say, you know, something costs $10, but if it's, you know, bone china, well you've got to bargain.
Well, the original report.
So I'd like to know the benefits as well. If we're going to put costs to everything environmental, I'd like to know the benefits to our city and.
Which is exactly what was asked for in the motion, which said the benefits.
This doesn't, this just.
No, this just refers back to the original motion, which asked for the benefits or otherwise that came out of those programmes.
But this one's.
An analysis.
Yeah, this one, this one doesn't have analysis. To me, it's reading, it's just about the detail report be provided on programmes and infrastructure, including expenditure. It's not talking about the benefit of our programmes.
Well, the original motion did, so I can guarantee you councillor, we will be going back to that.
Okay, well then can I ask through the chair to the mover of the motion, would they like to, would they be amenable to changing their motion to reflect what the original motion said, which also included the benefits to the city?
I will ask the mover of the motion, but it does say councillor, on the programmes. So any assessment of a programme has to consider the success or otherwise of the programme. That is just fundamental. Thank you councillor.
Yeah, I don't think any alterations are required. The motion does suggest that we note the report, which has already been provided, which I believe provides the information you're looking for. It's pretty simple as far as I'm concerned, just about being transparent with what we're spending on our programmes.
I'm not clarifying, I totally believe in transparency, but this is only talking about expenditure. It's not talking about the benefits of the programmes and all our other acquisitions.
Councillor, it says including, it doesn't say only.
A further detailed report will be provided on programmes and infrastructure provisions, including expenditure, operational or, that could just say the programmes are planting 100 trees. It then doesn't say, that does not show me that it's going to say the benefits.
Well councillor, that was asked for in the original motion.
Including expenditure and benefits to go along with your original motion.
Right. I believe that's been answered, the councillor has suggested he's happy with the wording.
Yeah, I, I think if we're talking about officer workload, I think that's going to exponentially increase the, the burden on officers to prepare this report. It's simply showing the expenditure that we, that our ratepayers are investing in these programmes. I don't think we need to burden the officers with anything further than that.
I will be seeking that anyway councillor, if that gives you any reassurance. Would you like to move an amendment councillor?
I would like to move an amendment, yes, thank you. To go along with the intent of the original motion as stated by councillor Talty, that the council resolves to note this report. this report and a further detailed report be provided on the programmes and infrastructure provisions, including benefits and expenditure. And the, that's off the top of my head.
Okay, we have to vote on that amendment? Councillor Boglari, are you happy to accept that as an amendment without going to vote?
No, I'm not, I think it's fine as it is, the intent of the motion stands, I believe that adding this to request the benefits as well is going to put unnecessary workload on officers.
Okay, councillors, I need a second for the proposed amendment, seconded councillor Bishop, can I just go straight to the vote or you want to debate it? Okay, councillors, those in favour of accepting the amendment as proposed by councillor Boglari, those in favour?
This is where you commented if you're asking.
Yes, okay, it does worry me, okay, those in favour are councillor Boglari, councillor Hughes, councillor Bishop, councillor Talty, those against, councillor Mitchell, councillor Gole, councillor Rendells, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Cooley, that is lost. So moving on now, do we need further, we've had our for and against and our questions, can we now go to the vote? We go back to the original proposed motion at the top of the page, councillors, those in favour? Those in favour are councillor Mitchell, councillor Gole, councillor Rendells, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Cooley, councillor Talty, those against are councillor Boglari and councillor Bishop with two councillors on leave, thank you councillors. Moving on to fifteen point two, which we have already done, fifteen point three is the civic support fund matter, do I have a mover? Councillor Mitchell is moving it, councillor Mackenzie is seconding, would you like to speak to it councillor Mitchell?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just for our background, it was thirteenth of September twenty twenty-three when we endorsed, or the council at the time endorsed, the civic support fund guidelines for a tune of five hundred thousand dollars, of seventy thousand of which was for staff member that would be ensuring those funds went to, in a targeted and effective fashion, to the community groups. Just highlighting, there were some quick response funds and and minor applications and major applications, anywhere up to fifty thousand dollars to help with cost of living pressures which were, are ongoing but were certainly very pointed at the time. Twenty-three different organisations benefited from this, and it's not really the organisations that benefit, it's their members and the community members that they were representing that benefited, and just to highlight just a few, I won't, it's in the report, you you can, the community and councillors can refer back to all the different organisations and the funding they received, but the benefits were as broad as driving lessons, which may have then helped someone go on and secure employment or or help care for a for a loved one, so seems pretty dry, just saying a driving lesson, but it's the outcome that would have meant. School camps, who would have known the benefits that may have come for those individuals by attending those camps and the development that helped with, food tubs, food, always a great thing for people to be able to access and nutritious food at that, white goods and even some counselling and on some 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 fairly nasty matters, but all of which, all the funding that was expended went to great use, I think it was a highly successful programme, it was the right thing to do at the right time, and this is just for noting, but I was proud to be a part of it.
Thank you councillor, do we have any speakers against? Questions, I'll allow comment if anybody wants to make comment. No, okay, with that we put the motion, those in favour, that's carried unanimously noting we have two councillors out of the room. Redlands Coast Eco Precinct planning update, we have a mover and second for that, moved councillor Mackenzie, seconded councillor Boglari, do you want to speak to it councillor?
Yes, thank you, we're all well aware, it's publicly been announced that RSPCA are looking to move their their wildlife hospital over into the Redlands, to what has formerly been called the Indigenous Scapes site, but what is now being known as the Redlands Coast Eco Precinct, councillors, in in attracting RSPCA to the city, we had discussed about activating that site down there in terms of formalising the car park and road access etcetera, there's a conceptual layout included in the attachments where that, where we'll be doing some of that work, some outdoor space renewal down at Indigenous Scapes, keeping obviously our natural bushland, and this is obviously going to be an exciting project for our city, and looking forward to seeing it move forward, and so this is just noting that we've done those technical assessments and cost evaluations and that we're going to move forward with activating that site as required to, for the RSPCA to move in there.
Thank you councillor, do we have any speakers against? No, councillor, I know you want to speak to it, so I'm going to just give you a comment time.
Yeah, thank you for that, I'd just like to give acknowledgement, ever since I've got into council, that area was always very much promoted and loved by by councillors within the room, I believe councillor Helen Murray from councillor Bishop's area and councillor Elliot from Rowan's previous started Indigenous Scapes many, many years ago, and over the years there's been several councillors, including many in the room, that have lobbied to build that area up, but I want to give acknowledgement also to all our wildlife carers that have been on the road all these years, with our injured animals, taking them left, right and centre to get help and often all the way up to Australian Zoo, and I believe this will also assist them, we've got a very passionate wildlife ambulance and many, many volunteers that help, so I I think they're going to be totally delighted at seeing this, and I've also got to give acknowledgement to our CEO, who I believe, though us, we sitting in the room have wanted this and have lobbied for it, I don't, I truly believe without your commitment to this project and perhaps using your connections, it wouldn't have come about, and I just want to publicly acknowledge you, you know, for that work you did, and it's absolutely fantastic that this is finally in the Redlands.
Thank you councillor, councillor, you have a question or a comment? It's fine, go.
It's along a similar line, and there's an officer in particular who, James O'Reilly, I don't want to mention specifically, but the work he's been doing I think has been building a lot of allegiance and collegiality, and I'll just also note along the similar lines councillor Boglari, this particular site, which through a court decree was ordained for community purposes, is a site that had a huge amount of community engagement about potential uses of the site over an extended period, and I think this brings to conclusion the sum total of the available use of that site, and I know there's work to be done by RS, by RSPCA, but I think the the outcomes are very much in line with the expectations of our community, and I think the the way that the various organisations, including our Indigenous Scapes, have worked together has offered a public benefit, and there is still an ongoing capacity for place making and gathering and use of the site to access Indigenous Scapes, and there do seem to be some ongoing synergies that I think are very beneficial, and they are in line with I think what were the original intentions from that court decree, I just think it's worth noting that, thank you.
Thank you, okay, councillors, everyone's good? Okay, with that we'll put the motion, oh sorry, summing up, no, with that we'll put the motion, those in favour, that's carried unanimously noting two councillors are on leave, thank you. Next we have expression of interest, trusteeship, land on North Strabach Island, fifteen point five, I have a mover and a second, moved councillor Mitchell, seconded councillor Bishop, would you like to speak to it councillor Mitchell?
Yes, thank you Chair, council hope to, this gets your support today, it's for council to write to the Department of Resources regarding the site, that firstly additional purposes be applied to local government operations, be included in the deed of grant trust, that's a very specific state lease, and additionally to write to the Department of Resources regarding the site to request, to express interest to the minister that Redlands City Council be appointed as the new trustee. What that will do is hopefully bring the site, which is the, for those of you that may know, in on straddy, the old RSL building, which has been surplus to the RSL's needs for I think three years now, has unfortunately slipped into disrepair, but what a great community asset it has, but council has not got the control over that asset at the moment. The uses that if council does get control over this lease and therefore the property for community purposes, could be for council officers and services themselves, but there would be a myriad of community uses lining up out the door to use this valuable space. As you would know, council controls very little property and land on Minjaraba, on North Strabach Island, this is a unique opportunity within one of the townships that is really unlikely to get this sort of opportunity ever again, here or elsewhere, so it is just an expression of interest, but a very important decision of council to be made today to support that, and let's put our best foot forward and see if council can secure the lease on behalf of the community, thank you.
Thank you, would we have any speaker against? Is it a question or a comment, allow comment?
Just on a similar line, I just think that council's provision of social infrastructure and community enabling spaces and places, particularly in Dunwich at a transitional time, is very important, just noting the history, also respect to those diggers and return services league personnel who the space was originally provided for, I think going forward the community use and the synergy with obviously the Dunwich township is going to be important, collaboration, consultation, I think going forward, while it's a little too early for us to be clear about what the specific uses are, I think going forward that collaborative approach is going to be very important to making sure that this is a a strategic use, noting that the other community hall does get used and sometimes the need for that use trumps most other bookings, and I think having an extra space like this could be very valuable for a range of reasons for council and community going forward, so support this, thank you.
Thank you, okay, councillors, did we need any further discussion? Yep, sum up?
No, just a very quick sum up, and thank you councillor Bishop for, it was remiss of me not to just highlight the 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 original purposes of that hall, which was for return services, and it's not to say that the RSL has left the island, we still have the cemetery, we still have a lot of history that is celebrated on the island and may remain active, just not within a physical building, so thank you.
Thank you, with that I'll put the motion, those in favour, that's carried unanimously noting two councillors are on leave. Thank you councillors, now, we have no reports from infrastructure and operations, I believe, we don't have any proposals under seventeen or eighteen that I'm aware of, urgent business, so I'm just going to ask councillors, given the matters that are inconfidential, do I need to move into confidential or are you happy to to move on through?
No need.
Okay, councillor Hughes, I'm confused, are you saying you do want to move into confidential? Right, okay, so no one needs confidential? Okay, thank you, so can I have a mover and a second for twenty point one, lease in Wellington Point, councillor Boglari, seconded councillor Hughes, but I won't ask you to speak to it councillor, those in favour? That's carried unanimously noting two councillors are on leave. Twenty point two, proposed disposal by lease arrangement at Thornlands, moved by councillor Mackenzie, seconded councillor Hughes, those in favour? Carried unanimously with two councillors on leave. Twenty point three, Cleveland wastewater treatment plant term lease renewal, moved councillor Boglari, seconded councillor Mitchell, those in favour? Carried unanimously with two councillors on leave. Okay, with that, I can close the meeting out, and thank you very much to all the officers and to councillors, closing the meeting out at one forty-eight PM, thank you councillors.